Dr. Hathi, do you know if they're ready for us to start? Or?
Uh, they're hopefully in two minutes.
Oh, okay, okay. So just start it then.
They're ready, how are they?
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're all asleep.
Uh, me too, me too. Um, I'm Brandy Johnson, uh, the choir director at McKinley Middle School. And, uh, we just have a few of our students here. Uh, we don't have the big advanced choir group, but a few of them to sing a couple of solos and duets. And this first duet was, it back in November, we did a cabaret called All Together Now, and these two ladies were a part of that. And, uh, we have Ms. Tori Broussard and Brooklyn Ellis. They are, yay, they are both top 26 students at McKinley Middle School, uh, getting ready to go to high school. And they are gonna sing a song from Thoroughly Modern Millie called Gimme Gimme. Okay, and this next young lady that's coming up is Trinity Newman. She is a sixth grader with us, but extremely talented in talented music. And she is going to sing maybe from the musical Annie. And this last, uh, selection that we have for you, um, is, um, a song from the musical Once, uh, which is?
Falling Slowly.
Falling Slowly, yeah. Didn't have my script pulled up. Um, and we have two very talented seventh graders, Katie, and she is in Advanced Strings, as you will see her play her guitar. And we also have Ruby Dupre, who is, has been in advanced choir since she's been in sixth grade.
Gotta check the tuning real quick. I don't know.
Uh, thank you all so much, um, and hopefully we'll be back again. Thank you very much.
Like to call to order this special meeting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board for Thursday, February 3rd. I'd like to read a couple of notices. Um, the public will be allowed? I have a quorum. I just don't, yeah, there's three of you and two of us, and so that's five. Yeah.
I can't.
It's okay. It's all right. I'm usually decent at that, but, um, at counting, anyway. Um, but I guess, Ms. April, are you okay from right there, or you need me to let you get back to your seat? Okay. Um, the notice is the public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the central office board meeting room space. Once capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members are required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. The special meeting scheduled for February 3rd, 2022 at 5:00 PM will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on Board Docs located on the school board's website. A period for written public comment will be provided before each meeting, as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in Board Docs and submit via the highlighted public comment hyperlink on the agenda item details. Online comments are available for public review. We'll now, uh, be led in invocation by Board Member Mark Ballou, and, uh, I'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Ballou?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life. We pray for the health and safety of everyone in our community. We ask for your guidance and wisdom this evening. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Continue to remind us that we are here in the pursuit of truth and the service of others. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We now move to roll call. Madam Secretary, please conduct the roll call.
District nine, President Tatman.
Present.
District four, Vice President Collins. District one, Mr. Ballou.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lannis. District three, Mr. Howard. District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Present.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
I want to remind everyone to log into the special meeting for Board Docs.
My screen looks a little different. It doesn't allow me to join the meeting. It only allows me to view it.
I hope that's what it does.
I don't know if anybody else is having that issue, but, yeah. One moment while we work through a few. And there it is, like magic. I refreshed, and it seemed to work. Pretty good?
Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you. We now move to item C1. Consideration of request for the approval of the Evil La Guarde Learning Center as the location of the Focus Choice School specializing in environmental and coastal studies, serving grades six through 12, strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, general fund. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Goday, seconded by, uh, Ms. Dyson. I'm not, I don't think so. I'm not here. I mean, I hear you, but you're pretty close to me.
Is that better?
Yes.
Someone, Monique Scott Spalding. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Let's start again. Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Narcisse, I am Monique Scott Spalding, um, Director of Facilities, and I'm here to talk to you about the Focus Choice School at the Evil La Guarde Center. That's in partnership with Louisiana State University and with the Water Institute, and it will be called the Coastal Science Institute. That building was built in 1960, and it was renovated in 2014. It has a capacity of 380 students, and we are projecting enrollment for the sixth through 12th grade, um, school of 350, so that's 50 per grade level. The anticipated renovations are in classrooms, and of course, the furniture. That was originally a K through 5 site, and we're transitioning it to a 6th through 12th site, and so we will need to go in and make some minor modifications in the classrooms, such as removing some of the built-ins and making sure that we have space for the students, um, and of course, adding furniture. We hope to be able to address the furniture for the entire population in FY '22. There's a projected cost with the renovations and with the new furniture of 1.2 million. The source of funding is from ESAR dollars. And again, our timeline is FY '22. Are there any questions?
I do not see anyone on the board. Mr. Howard.
Okay.
Thank you. Hello? All right, thank you, President Tatman. I just, last time, we talked about these, this project particularly, we talked about, like, the level of community engagement around, um, the folks at this school and impact. Specifically, the conversation was geared towards, um, the folks at McKinley High School who had issues about, like, the proximity and what the, was, what that meant for McKinley. Can someone provide an update of what that process was like, what it went to? Um, and then I also wanted to lift up in this moment that I think that it would be great for us to do a landscape analysis around these kind of projects. And basically, what that entails is, like, having all of the different components of the district and things that would impact and impact or affect based off of decisions were made. So if we're doing a, a digital arts school, like, all of the digital arts components in the district, what does that mean for those students, that population, those teachers, X, Y, Z? So in the future, we can already know, um, kind of like, from a strategic, strategic standpoint, where these kind of projects fall. So I just want to know for this moment, like, what was the engagement with the McKinley folks like regarding this school and what that meant for McKinley? Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Board Member Howard. Uh, we, on the day after the vote, we ended up meeting with the McKinley, uh, high school alumni. Uh, part of that meeting was, uh, myself, uh, some of my staff, and also Board Member Goday, and Board Member Ware Jackson was present. Uh, and we had a, uh, conversation concerning, um, you know, uh, not only just the school, but what does that mean for them and their community? Uh, as a matter of fact, if, uh, anybody from the McKinley, uh, alumni here, Mr. Combs, um, that you all well know that, uh, brought up, if, I'll let him speak.
Morning, Board Members. Uh, good to see you again after our last meeting. Uh, Dr. Narcisse was so, uh, very, um, expedited on wanting to make sure that the McKinley faithful had some level of understanding of what was gonna be happening in the, uh, district. School Board Member Goday was definitely a big part of that. Um, Ms. Ware Jackson, uh, they came to us, and we were having some very good talks about some things that are coming down the pipe for our community. I think that, um, everybody there was very satisfied with those talks. I think everybody kind of has a much better understanding of what this school is about and what it's gonna bring to our community. Um, I know that coastal environmental issues right now are some of the biggest issues we face as a state, and so the need for this type of programming is paramount. And the students that are gonna be there, I feel like, um, are gonna, like, really benefit us in the long term with that. Now, as far as us having conversations about McKinley, we've been assured by the district that we are going to definitely be, um, um, in conversation for some unique programming at our school, and that's very exciting. Um, I would like to congratulate this board for being progressive in making sure that everybody is aware of what's going on. I think that has been much improved. Um, I look to see more improvements of that communication going forward based on our newfound ability to see, you know, to get on the same par. And, um, I think this is a good project now that I understand it, and the community understands we understand it, and I think any conversations down the line, um, with the community, I think will go, um, much better now that people are at the table having conversations about what's best moving forward, and especially in Old South Baton Rouge. So I think it was a very good meeting, and I look forward to seeing what comes out of this new school.
That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Uh, Ms. Dyson?
Yes, I'm thankful for these community meetings. I'm, I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. I wanted to ask, um, we talked about the ESAR funding for the actual facility enhancements and that kind of thing. I'm just wondering about the fiscal, uh, budget as far as, um, any kind of programming and going forward with this, as far as, um, do we have, are we in the process of working out an MOU with, um, the partners? Is, is it not gonna be a contract? It's gonna be an MOU? Is that my correct understanding?
Yes, yes, it will be an MOU, Board Member Dyson, and, uh, we get a lot of general counsel to get more specific.
So there won't be a financial, um, impact on that with the partner organizations or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, to make sure I'm understanding the question, we are in the process of talking with the partners about an MOU. We have a meeting Monday set, um, and we'll work out details at that point. I'm not certain of the financial commitment of the partner, but we are working those details out.
No, the, the, the partnership does not include fiscal implications, but what it, what it includes is a resource allocation. So for example, um, for example, at the LSU school, we have actually Dean Roland Mitchell is actually here, um, and, um, Mr. Kevin George, uh, but like, for example, they would be sharing their faculty, uh, collaborate our faculty, um, there's a lot of those logistics. So, uh, there's not a financial, but I would say, uh, when you allocate people, there's a financial resource, so that's where the finances come in. Or professional development, collaboration for PD between the faculty and our teachers, those are the logistics that are being worked out.
But they will still be paying their, their employees.
That's correct.
We won't take that on.
Yes.
And they're gonna in kinder, that kind of, it's gonna be a true partnership where we're both putting resources towards the goal.
That is correct. And I know Dean Mitchell is here, if there's anything you would like to add.
I very much appreciate that, and, uh, thank you for this information. This is, this is an exciting, uh, new kind of, uh, forward-thinking, uh, innovative idea, and I know that, you know, I am a little bit concerned about the, uh, well, more, probably more than a little bit, I am concerned about the swing space issue because we're going to have some schools coming up in the tax plan that are gonna need sites, and I understand we've, we've, uh, we have already demolished and it's gone, um, one of the sites, um, in, in somewhat of a proximity, and I'm just, you know, we must be thinking ahead about swing space because it's gonna get pretty serious, I think, on our plates. Um, we're running out of options for swing space. We're not gonna have Broadmore Middle for swing space, and now we're taking Evil La Guard out of that equation, so I'm just kind of thinking we need to be real proactive on that. Thank you very much, and, and thank you to these, uh, community business partners. Um, I'm real excited to help this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Uh, Vice President Collins?
Yeah, I grew up at 328 West Roosevelt Street, uh, and UT was, uh, is my elementary school. I'm a mother, and I'm very clear that there's a distinction between the bottom and Old South Baton Rouge, and I just want to raise that up when you're saying you're addressing certain needs. Did we include current and future McKinley family? Did we include McKinley staff, uh, in these discussions? It's nice that we met with once a group of constituents, alumni, uh, McKinley alumni is a strong, powerful, well- a strong, powerful, well-respected group, and so I do not dismiss that meeting in any shape, form, or fashion, but there are other key stakeholders that were not brought to the table, and that is concerning to me. Again, my primary concerns, one of my primary concerns, two of my primary concerns still are on the table. One, there is no comprehensive plan of what to do for all of our schools, so then we have no way to mitigate unintended consequences, including McKinley High, because it's just been brainstorming and conversation, not solid delivery of anything on that campus. And again, I appreciate the fiscal note of facility costs, but that's a one-time expense that I actually, that's a one-time expense. I also appreciate it being noted that it'll come from one-time money, the ESER funds, but no note at all about what the operational expense, which is a brand-new expense, will be for continuing to have a school on that campus. It's different from using it as a swing space, because you're just essentially transferring operational expense from the school that's being built to another facility, but in this case, we're talking about a whole new school, and so for that reason, my position remains the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Ms. Ware Jackson.
Thank you, President Tatman. I was in the, in the meeting, and from, from what I could pick up from people that were in attendance, that, you know, that this is good for the community, that whole territory, and, and it's great to have a partnership like that with LSU and the water campus. The only, the only thing that I, that I picked up that, that is really concerning to me in, you know, I know that the alumni, you know, they're not, they're not going to complain about this to you today, so I'll tell you about it, all right? McKinley's been around for a long time, and, you know, has, has been kind of pushed on the back burner too many times, and I think the, the only, there was just a bit of resentment for, you know, talking, talking about improvements at McKinley, and then seeing a lot of things going on around the district, and not coming back to follow up with what was proposed for McKinley. So I, I think we're on a really good track with figuring out a specific target or specific interest for the school. I know they're, they're working very diligently, and we'll be able to incorporate that into the, the construction plans when that comes about, so that's, that's a very good move. But, you know, they've lost a lot as far as gifted and talented goes, and, you know, they're, another big part of their attraction is the talented arts and, and theater, and we don't know how that's going to be impacted, you know, with future projects coming along, but McKinley really needs something right now to attract students back, because a lot of our gifted and talented students tend to jump on a magnet track, and, you know, we've seen that happen over the years, and, and the school is feeling that. So, you know, we're really excited about what's coming down the pike, like, in a couple of years for McKinley, once they get on that, that specific track that they're looking at, but for right now, we really want to see some attention given to some things that could be done, that could help with, with attendance, kind of raise attendance and attract to McKinley, because it's very important, and it could be something as simple as something dealing with transportation. I don't know if this is still an issue, but at one point, a gifted and talented student who lived outside of the attendance zone, who wants to come to McKinley, would be put on a transfer bus, whereas if they chose to a magnet track, they had a direct route. You know, I don't know if that's still in place, but things like that, just little things like that, will pull kids into another, onto another track and pull away from McKinley. So I don't have the answers around, you know, what we could do, but I think we can put our heads together and see, you know, what kinds of things are going on there, and what we can do to help them right now. But for the future, you know, I see a really bright light over there, and it should be, because, you know, McKinley's 115 years old, and for the longest time, you know, it was a regional school where people had to basically walk, catch a, catch a ferry, you know, to, if they wanted to get a high school education. So I think we should keep that in mind, and, you know, and be proud of, of what McKinley is and, and what it stands for. So I say all that, you know, but, you know, I support this, I think it's going to be great for the, the community as a whole, and to see those partnerships right there in that territory is, is a very good thing, and, and I, I appreciate us doing whatever we can for McKinley High and, and making it stronger than it is now, and just a beacon of light like it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Mr. Goday.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. One, I want to extend my thanks to the members of the McKinley High Alumni Association for getting together with us and meeting us, and as Mr. Coombs talked about, and, and others, we do need to sit and have a good long-term plan for McKinley. The way I expressed it is, you know, in 2027, what do we want McKinley to look like? Because we need to have that kind of forethought in order to be able to plan the building and plan the uses of that building and things would go. Instead, we've kind of been, every time a program came up, we kind of picked it, can this go McKinley? Can this go McKinley? We need to be much more thoughtful about what we do, and so I, myself, as a board member, if I'm still around, pledge that we will undertake that, to be thoughtful about where and how we want McKinley to look five years from now, eight years from now, 10 years from now, and then make a concrete path to get there. Because if you don't know where you're going, any road looks as good as any other road. So we really need to come up and get community agreement and agreement with us and the board and others about what McKinley needs to be in the future, and then start taking concrete steps to get there. I do want to make one comment about the fiscal aspects of the thing. Remember, right now, we have UT and Buchanan, and as part of us consolidating those two schools, which is a very good thing to do, because it lets us consolidate resources, there's a principal right now at UT and a principal at Buchanan, the new McKinley Middle will only have one principal. There are other assistant principals and everything else, so we will get economies of scale at the, between Buchanan and UT as they move toward the McKinley Elementary. And so my envision is that, my vision is that we will be able to populate the administration of the school with basically no change or minor change from where we are today, and teachers follow students. So students are being in that classroom, they would be in a different classroom with a different teacher, so I don't see a big, huge cost from a personnel standpoint, which is 80% or more of the costs that we have. We have the facility costs, so to me, the only real cost that we'd be looking at would be the cost of any special programs or things like that, and that's where things like our partnership with LSU and stuff will come into, come into being. So I, for one, don't foresee a very big fiscal impact from starting up this school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. Ms. Dyson.
Yes, and I also agree with my colleagues, with my colleagues in that it's important that we think about not just the here and now, and that we look ahead and plan for not just one high school or another, but for every single high school and their feeder patterns going forward. So I think every one of our high schools needs the kind of attention that we're giving to any high school. And I did want to clear something up, though. The thing about, when we talk about the gifted and talented at McKinley, for years and years and years, McKinley High School was the only in our entire district high school that had, that, that we offered gifted and talented in. And I will say that what we did when we finally allowed access to those kids that were over an hour away, and put it at Woodlawn High School, allowed it, what we did is we kept an attendance line for gifted, which is different than the school attendance lines, and we did this for, I thought was going to be for the first couple of years, to not negatively impact McKinley High School, and allow for, you know, schools then to be in healthy, you know, competition as far as, you know, how to get those students. What we did was actually the other way, and we still have it in place today, where the attendance lines for the gifted and talented, where we offer bus transportation, include every single part, every street of our district, except for the Woodlawn attendance lines. What that means is, the Woodlawn gifted and talented program, and they're, those families and students, the only ones that are offered any kind of transportation at all, are the ones that live in the Woodlawn attendance lines. McKinley, on the other hand, the gifted and talented program there, a student from Northeast, Tara, Estruma, Broadmoor, Glennoe, all high schools, all the rest of the district, is provided busing to McKinley. And to participate in that program at Woodlawn High School, if you don't live in Woodlawn High School's attendance lines, you get no provided transportation. So I don't really like to hear the comments of, you know, what we did or what we cut out because we didn't, and we continue to offer that extended busing across the district to everyone, except for the Woodlawn High School attendance lines, and they cannot go to McKinley on a bus. So I just wanted to clear that up. And as we go forward, I'm really looking forward to the exciting things that we can do in each and every one of our high schools, and all of our schools for that matter, but I'm really thrilled, because we'll, we'll include the elementary and middle through this planning process, if we can get our attendance lines and our feeder patterns really connected and good and for the communities they serve. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Ms., Vice President Collins.
Just real quickly, I can't let the budgetary issue slide. The fact that it's omitted, the operational expense that the time was not taken, to put the recurring operational expense, is not small, it's not slight, it's a brand-new operational expense. You can't talk away core teachers, you can't talk away other types of teachers and et cetera. It's a whole new school with a whole set of recurring operational expenses, from cutting the grass to all kind of other stuff. I mean, cutting the grass, we keep up with our lawn regardless, but, you know, I can't go from having to defend an application for a $15 million grant because of remaining expenses after a $15 million grant, to just closing my eyes to an expense that's not being supplemented at all. And so I just wanted to, to mention that if we say we want to be fiscally transparent, then go ahead and just put that, put the information, if it's $5 million, $15 million, that's going to recur from having the school open, then fine, but we got to be upfront about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Board's clear. Can, any comments from the audience on the item?
Good evening, Board Members.
Good evening.
I'm Dale Flowers. I am president of our Alumni Association at McKinley, and we decided not to take a stand. So I'm not speaking for the association, I'm speaking for myself. We are, I am not excited about this school, but I think it is a school that is needed in our community, and we're not fighting against it. I will say, when it comes to McKinley, we have not received what other high schools in this city have received. I just listened to Board Member Dyson, who stated that they hadn't done anything that's affected McKinley. You were part of building Baton Rouge High School, expanding. Those students left McKinley to go to Baton Rouge High School. You were part of building Liberty High School. Those students left McKinley going to Liberty. So yes, you have affected McKinley High School, and those are the things that we want done for our school, so it can remain viable in this community. That's it.
Thank you, Reverend Flowers. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, back to the board. Ms. Dyson.
I just wanted to comment that I was only talking about the gifted and talented that was brought up, not any other ways we have affected, because I do agree that there are other effects that, that happen with schools, and we always have to play the devil's advocate to look at what are the unintended consequences. And so mine were very narrow in there, and that remark, my remarks were very narrow in that I was saying, particularly with the gifted and talented, because that I had to point out, that we already have not, like, equally divided the gifted and talented busing situations. We've never looked at the gifted and talented attendance lines. So my, I am not, I totally agree that other things that we do, like opening up dedicated magnets and that kind of thing, they do affect neighboring schools or anywhere that, especially if you can get to it under an hour, you know, and we, we've just done that at Broadmoor Middle, you know, we're opening up a different thing, and it's going, you know, there will be some potentially, you know, that would have gone to some of our other talented programs, and so I get that, and I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it, Mr. Flowers, because I, I was very intentional in that gifted and talented busing, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Ms. Ware Jackson.
I'm sorry.
Nope, accident. Okay, thank you. Ms. Bernard.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Tatman. Thank you, Reverend Flowers, for, for being here, and I share Reverend Flowers' sentiments as well, that we have failed to invest in the gifted program at McKinley High to, to make it an attractive program for students, and therefore, they do choose to attend some of... therefore they do choose to attend some of the magnet programmings. And I think it is to the detriment of the gifted program at the school. I would like to do something, I would like to be mindful of that going forward, that we are able to support the program. The program is now so small that we no longer have the number of students to justify the kind of electives that our students in the gifted and talented program need. It's disappointing to me as a board member, because I can remember when it was the only thing that a gifted child would choose, McKinley High School gifted program, and that's no longer true. So I'd like to be mindful of that going forward. The other thing that I wanted to say is that I think, I very much appreciate the last meeting where my colleagues, Mr. Howard, asked to have a town hall meeting or a larger-scale community meeting at the school and to have community input. I spoke with members of the staff after the last meeting, and I was very specific in describing the kind of meeting that I thought needed to take place. I thought it needed to be a large-scale meeting. I thought that it needed to include more than just the small number of people who, to whose attention this came and who showed up at our last meeting, that there are a number of people in the community who are concerned and who are affected, who have opinions, who just didn't happen to know that this was going on. And so I do, I am deeply disappointed that those, that that large-scale community outreach did not take place, because I think that, I'll just speak for myself, I think that several of us up here, though, wanted a larger-scale community outreach to take place and better community input. So I think I'm where I am, where I was last time, and thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. The board is clear. Madam Secretary, will you please conduct the vote?
Please vote.
The item is approved. That concludes the business for this special meeting. Ms. Bernard moves that we adjourn. What's here? Somebody wanted to speak? No, okay. This is yours now?
Switching meetings. We now move forward with the committee of the whole. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the central office board meeting room space. Once the capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members are required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. The committee of the whole, scheduled for February 3, 2022, immediately following the special meeting, will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on Board Docs located on the school board's website. A period for written public comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any other posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in Board Docs and submit via the highlighted public comment hyperlink on the agenda item details. These online comments are available for public review. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District nine, President Tatman.
Present.
District four, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lannis. District three, Mr. Howard.
Present.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Present.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Godey.
Present.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
Okay, had to remember that the baton was passed. All right, updates from the superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. February is Black History Month. Throughout the month of February, we're excited to celebrate the many contributions of Black people through history and throughout our community. Please continue to watch our social media channels and website as we celebrate Black History Month together. As we are a community that has various groups of different people, which makes us a strong community, we're excited to go ahead, to celebrate Black History Month during this month. Also this month, in the month of February, we will be celebrating literacy all month long. We will kick off our iHeart Reading Campaign on February 14th, followed by our Black Men Read Campaign February 17th and 18th. We are excited to have leaders from across our community who will come and share the love for reading with our students by reading to them. COVID updates. We will continue to monitor the district's positivity rate through the month of February. An announcement concerning the possibility of making masks optional will be shared on or before March 1, 2022, and in partnership with our Health Advisory Committee. A reminder that the self-isolation time has been shortened to five days for those who are able to wear a mask and remain at 10 days for those who are too young to, who are too young or unable to wear a mask. At this time, we want to also update you, as the weather has been changing in terms of inclement weather and our transitioning to remote learning when we have weather challenges. So in order to provide more clarity to families during inclement weather or delayed starts, we've created a space on our website that outlines our standard operating procedures moving forward. I'd like to invite our Chief Technology Officer, Amy Jones, to share a little bit more with you those changes. Amy?
On our website, bottom of every homepage, you'll see there's a red emergency button that will connect us to an emergency page that allows information to be updated as needed. If we click on that emergency page, we are introducing the delayed opening, and beneath each of these graphics, there are schedules that are sample schedules for schools to follow based on grade bands. And then stay tuned to each individual school for more precise instructions by school level. And then further down, there are resources for early dismissal. And then if we transition to remote learning, these links are hyperlinked also on our COVID page, because they are live documents that are subjected to updating as needed. So again, that's at the bottom of every page. There's the emergency red button that will get you to those, as well as this will be shared on our social media when events happen that change according to the weather or closures.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Just wanted to, just to continue to provide clarity to the community, whenever we have an inclement weather challenge, we usually will make two sets of decisions based on whether roads are good or those type of things. We'll either go to a two-hour delay schedule, which school leaders will have on their website and also on our webpage, or we'll either close school in general or we'll transition the entire school system to virtual school. During that time, we will require, when we are, have any inclement weather channel, that we'll require for all students to get their laptops to take actually home as we do that. We do that mostly in our middle and high schools, but I know in elementary, that has not always been the practice, so we will be working to do that, to ensure that our families are able to have access virtually. And usually, in those times, we will keep a normal, regular schedule at that time. I will transition to the last portion is to concerning our budget update. I'll now ask for Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Kelly Lopez, and also Dr. Sandra Bethley, Dr. Sandra Bethley, to come up to the microphone as they will share concerning our budget. As many of you may know, I've worked closely together to maintain a healthy and balanced budget, and upon the request of the board, wanted to make sure that we provide a snapshot on the current health of our budget as we move forward. So we'll start off with Dr. Bethley first. They'll provide an update on our federal dollars, and then Ms. Kelly Lopez on our overall budget. Dr. Bethley?
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to give a quick overview of our balances and the expenses so far that we have for Action S2, Action 1. As you can see, a snapshot, all of our, the bar graph that you see in blue, these are our expenses and items that have been encumbered, administrative costs, indirect costs, the funding that was allocated to our charter schools, the social and emotional learning category where we have employees, our students with disabilities where we have one employee, our student support program, that's where we have our literacy coaches and our professional development, materials and supplies. And our early childhood, you see, we still have a balance in materials and supplies of $334,000, and in early childhood, we have $1 million. We also have a balance in devices and connectivity for $2.1 million, and for sanitation and training, $466,000, and I'm rounding this off for you. In feeding and nutrition, we have a balance of $25,000. So if you would go to the next slide, you would see S3, Action 1. So as you can see again, our expenses are, which has also been encumbered, our indirect costs, the funding for our charter schools, our PD and our online software has also been expended, our academics, which includes full-time employees, and that has been also expended. For, you see our balances, if we go back to the top of the graph, it's an administrative cost. We have $133,000 in social and emotional, and that's for our school nurses. HVAC, we have a balance of $335,000, and we have a balance of $2.3 million in summer learning. Thank you.
I, I'll hold mine. I want to come back. I have questions about the COVID.
You don't want to, I mean, she didn't.
But I'm, mine were about the, in the superintendent's report, the COVID remarks that were made.
Oh, I apologize.
So I guess I'll have to just stay in the queue or something.
All right.
For that, for following this subject. Thank you.
Board Member Godey, was it on this?
Yes, this is for Ms. Bethley. Just, just to clarify a few things for the public. On your chart that you had up, the dark blue line is listed expenses, but that's expenses and encumbered. So those are monies that are committed, because some of those were salaries and things like that, so they have not all been expended yet, but those are funds that are committed to specific uses. So I just wanted the public to understand that. And then secondly, for the public, could you just give them a quick, and I know this is difficult, but a quick overview on the difference between Action 1 and Action 2, because the S, there's S2 and 3, which are two different bills, but the Action 1 is really monies that we can spend this year, and then there's follow-ups. Could you just give a brief explanation of that?
Yes, sir. S2 and S3, Action 1, is funds that have been awarded to us, and we have obligated most of the funds. We are in the process of completing the budget for S2 and S3, Action 2, and so we are waiting on the State Department for final approval for S2 and S3, Action 2.
Thank you very much.
Board Member Howard?
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Dr. Bethley, my question, or not question, I've asked this kind of before. So the chart that you presented is a very high-level chart of like expenditures, expenses and encumbered versus balances. I would like for in the future, even in this meeting, like, if we can provide more of like a detail of like what's considered indirect costs, what's considered a line item, that can be you, because like, one of the line items was academics. What is academics? What do we consider academics? So some kind of ledger to help assist, A, the board members like myself, as well as the public in understanding, because like, that high-level chart can be confusing, because I don't know what, I still am kind of confused, like, what we consider to be professional development, academics, and all of these things. So I would like to know, you know, like I've asked before, like, just when they present you or give you these balances, to have a little more detail around what do we consider, or just some kind of like ledger of terms to see what things are classified as. So, thank you.
I can provide you with that. With the academics, personnel, and materials and supplies, but I can provide you with that chart.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then regarding devices and connectivity, this is less actually a budget question and more a, I see we have $2.1 million, might as well say $2.2 million, round up, dollars left that haven't been allocated, and it's reminding me of the concern I have that when we had to be out for weather, et cetera, and we needed to go to virtual, we are no longer sending our devices home every day. And we have monies that would allow us to make sure our students have those options. I know some people have concern, I mean, some districts like Ascension Parish were doing, sending devices home every day before the pandemic, and I don't see why we can't do it, especially when we got $2.14 million sitting there. Some people have concern, you know, their devices get messed up, stolen, et cetera. I mean, textbooks are very expensive. When you add up all the different textbook, the paper textbook, hardback textbooks, can really add up to more expense than a Chromebook. And so then it kind of blows my mind that we not sending these Chromebooks home, especially when we have the funding there to continue doing that, especially while we still dealing with a relatively unpredictable pandemic. And so I just want to raise that concern up. Then, what's the status? This is more facility question. I know we had put some thing, with some planning was put in motion with the HVAC system and the ventilation and all of this, and I see we have, you know, $330,000 left. Where are we on? And that includes, or doesn't, that includes considering what has been encumbered. So have we completed our HVAC needs, plans that we had? Thank you. I know you weren't prepared to, for a facility question, but since that was a plan put in place, prayerfully didn't put you on the spot to know where you at on the timeline on it.
That's okay. And so when I came on board in September, we started discussing an HVAC plan. There was a proposal that was received regarding ionization that we haven't been able to meet, because we wanted to do that out of S2 funding, but it was more than $2.9 million. What we have done is the MIR-13 filtration to increase indoor air quality, and that's at a price point of about $250,000 a year. And so we have been able to maintain that to ensure that our facilities, irregardless of the age, are able to have better indoor air quality.
Okay, all right. And I can follow with you offline about more questions I have with that. Thank you very much. And then the last thing on this, I do have concern, like, my colleague on what some of that, like, for example, administrative costs, is, I see we've exhausted it in Action S2, Action 1, but- And so, you know.
The administrative costs.
Yes, ma'am.
Is to pay the salaries of clerical.
Clerical.
That help to process all the requisitions and payroll.
So that kind of administer, like with a grant or something like that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, and that's all I have. And, come on, Ms. Lopez.
So good evening. Will we have a general fund budget update? Each year, the presentation of a proposed general fund budget is brought to the board in June. This timing is necessary to ensure that all revenues have been reviewed for consistency with both the city parish government, approved by BESI and the state legislature. All expenditures must be properly vetted by staff and given proper consideration in the budget. Currently, we do not have many hard numbers. We will not receive the December 2021 sales tax until February 10th, due to all sales tax being 45 days in arrears. We have received approximately 85% of the district's property taxes. However, the MFP funding has not been approved by the state legislature at this time for the 2022, 2023 school year. These numbers typically are not available until the end of March. Further, the final numbers for the 2021, 2022 MFP will not be available until the LDOE's student information system closes on February 25th. Above, you will see the proposed budget timeline that was completed in December of 2021 and placed on the district website. The district has worked diligently over the past three years to have a balanced budget. For fiscal year ending 2020, the district had an ending increase, ending increase in the fund balance of 9.7 million dollars. For fiscal year 2021, the district had an ending increase in fund balance of 18.8 million dollars. For fiscal year 2022, the district is projecting an ending increase in fund balance of 2.1 million dollars. Since 1920, the district's financial condition has improved. This has been the ongoing goal and commitment of our superintendent, district leadership, and finance department. The 2021, 2022 revised budget is currently being reviewed and completed by staff. Property taxes have increased 0.1%. Sales tax are currently estimated to increase by 7%. However, at this time, we are working with early numbers as our sales taxes are only through November of 2021. MFP estimate will not be provided by the state until the February 1st count has been solidified in the state's student information system on February 25th. At that time, both our MFP revenues, as well as our charter expenditures, charter school expenditures will be finalized. Current projections have a 1% decrease in salaries and benefits. And all chiefs have been charged with reviewing spending through December of 2021 in order to, for the final budget calculations in the budget. So our 2022 general fund. City parish govern is projecting a decrease in sales tax due to COVID-19 and inflation. Property tax is projected to increase if the millage rolls forward by board approval in March of 2022. Charter schools continue to grow throughout the district. KIP will open its doors in August of 2022, and eight of our current charter schools will grow a grade this next year. Federal and state funding is being reviewed constantly for district opportunities. Finance, federal programs, and human resources are working together to determine the best funding opportunities for students in our district. The finance department is working closely with the superintendent and district leadership in order for the budget to follow the goals of the strategic plan in regards to student achievement, operational efficiencies, and stakeholder commitment. The district is working through the staffing process to bring efficiencies to the district's school sites and assist in appropriately and equitably staffing our schools across the district for the needs of their individual populations. Due to the time of the fiscal year, the budget is currently fluctuating and will be provided for review in May of 2022 and approval in June of 2022. The superintendent and district leadership is committed to the financial stability of the district and will work tirelessly to ensure the continued growth. So as you can see, our next steps, we will come for the board for our revised 2021, 2022 budget in May of 2022. We will share our proposed 22, 23 general fund budget with the board members in May of '22. We will also share it on the 2022, 2023 general fund budget at the committee of the whole budget workshop in June and reach out again for approval in June of 2022's board meeting.
All right, and Board President Tatlin.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Just a couple of questions. Sales tax up 7% from the previous year?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea of what that looks like over a period of time?
The entire year? I'm projecting approximately 112. I'm using the 3% estimate used by Dr. Richardson with city parish government. So it may be a little, it's a conservative estimate.
No, I understand.
I'm through November, and, and I will keep working with the numbers every month as I get them. But right now, I'm assuming approximately 112 million for this year.
Do you remember if sales taxes were up last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm not going to even ask you about the year before, because that's a little much.
Actually, in '17, '18, they were up 1%. '18, '19, they dropped 1%. Then they went up a little bit, and then they went really, really high last year, and they're still really high right now.
Lots of people staying home eating food and all that stuff. Okay, on to the next item, charter schools. You, you have typically in the past given us some idea about the growth in charter seats and what impact that would have on our budget. Do you have any idea, you know, you, you knew those other numbers right off the top of your head, so I'm thinking you have that in your,
Yes, sir.
On your hard drive.
We're working on it right now. We just finished with our enrollment projections this week for our next year. It's approximately 7,500 charter schools, students, which is about 1,500 up from last year. You're looking at a, and it's going to depend on the sales tax and the property tax because the local is such a huge portion of that, so I'm still working with those numbers. I hate to give you an estimate and it'd be wrong. So let me get that number back to you, but it's about 7,500 students right now, is the estimation. And it's all based upon the final and the revised numbers as to what we pay for the local.
So last year, what we do know, what was the impact of charter school seats?
For type 1, and it was about 100 million dollars in our budget. Yes, this year. And we're, we're right on the money with it.
And you said we, 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 help me, you said we will have 1,500 more.
Approximately.
Which is a total of what?
7,500.
7,500. So I'm going to try to work out some math here. I'm not going to do it, it would take me too long. Let's see.
Roughly 12,000 this year.
12,000 per student each year, roughly. Well, Matt, so you have the numbers. How much is that increase for us, Mike? 1,500 and 12,000?
Well, 1,500, there's a nuance to that. Because Capital High School coming on, so Capital High School was moving from a type 2 charter, a type 5 charter.
To type 2.
To type 1 charter.
Type 1, yeah.
And so that 1,500 number includes 400 people there. So the real net-net, it gets complicated with the numbers, but the real net-net is 1,100 students more, if you look at it, because we didn't have the Capital High students in first place. So 1,100 students, so it's about 14 to 15 billion dollars.
Okay.
Ground numbers, I'm an engineer.
Yeah, that's cool. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking notes or, you know, just trying to get a sense of this. So, so right now, I'm going to ask you a question you may not be able to answer, but we're going to have to try to find and answer this. If we didn't have S or dollars right now, would we have a balanced budget? Or would we have a deficit?
As of right now, as far as I can tell, we would have a balanced budget, but at this point, I don't know. It's very, very early. It will depend on a lot of things, sales tax, MFP, our current district enrollment, indirect cost from different federal funding. There's a lot of moving pieces.
Sure. So, and look, the state's dealing with the same thing, but one of the things the state does is they have rules relative to one-time money. When one-time money comes in, they can't spend it on recurring expenses. And so they have specific things, rainy day trust fund, infrastructure, you know, it's too much to go into. And I guess I'm, I'm, I'm going to trust that you're telling me that the S or funds are not what we're using to balance our budget, but that we're okay.
We're working with many different federal funds.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you for the information. I think you might have more questions.
Yes, board, oh.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, board member Bernard.
Ms. Lopez. I would like a summary of recurring expenditures that have previously been in the general fund budget prior to our receiving the special funds for COVID and that have been shifted to the, the COVID budgets. Can, can I have that before the full board meeting?
Sure.
In the next two weeks?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and you'll send it to the entire board?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Board Member Dyson, what's your name? Accidentally pulled.
It was still on my.
Okay, all right. So the, hmm, all right. So I'm going loosely from the notes that I had when we first had our proposed, when we had our first proposed S or budget spending. And then we came back around and we, and the board approved a budget. Looking at the chart that was given on the S or spending, what it was being spent on, whether or not it was a one-time expense or a recurring expense, in conjunction with what the budget was that we approved for this fiscal year. I recall roughly around at least 20 million dollar deficit we had committed ourselves to just from the S or spending that included one-time, that one-time money that we are receiving on recurring expenses and the budget. And so then my question is, what happens when we have to shift recurring expenses? And you could answer that question when you follow with my colleague's question about exactly how much we have shifted from regular recurring expenses that was coming from the general fund to the one-time money. What happens when, when that money runs out? What is the, and, and if you could answer that question in the sense of what is usual protocol when there's a significant deficit, then I appreciate that. Thank you. Board Member Goday.
Yes, I was going to pass because I gotten, I wanted to bring up the Capital High issue. But I do want to put out the thought there that we need to be careful for asking Ms. Lopez for figures versus policy. You know, what do we do when there, you know, how to, how to cover that money and things like that that we're talking about is really policy decisions. Ms. Lopez is the financial officer, she's not the strategic lead of the district. So I don't think it's appropriate to put Ms. Lopez in a box of saying, how do you try to do that? She can give us the numbers and she can define, she can define the box, but playing inside the box really isn't her role. And I don't want to put her into that difficult position to do that. So I think it's very appropriate to have her defining the box, but I, I don't think we should ask her to, to, to do that. And, you know, I just want to remind the board, we have precedent on how to come back from how we spent into a very big deficit budget in the past. We had a 27 billion dollar deficit budget in the past that was approved by this board, so I don't want to go there again, and I will not go there again. But, you know, let's not kid ourselves that we haven't been there in the past because we as a board did pass that budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And just real quickly, if you can, again, provide the information I asked for. It's up to the board to decide, but I'm clearly aware that our agenda is set by the superintendent. He meets with his team, and he advises us and puts things on the agenda in conjunction with board leadership, but he sets the agenda and it gets approved by the president. So things on the agenda, information received for us to make decisions, policy decisions, is according to the superintendent and staff advice. So if you could provide the information, if we hit XYZ deficit or generally speaking, when we hit a significant deficit, whatever that benchmark is, because we a big district and we tend to be, at least the staff tends to be fiscally responsible and protocol and whatnot. Okay, then what is the protocol that the staff has historically recommended? Not what we would recommend today? Thank you. Board President Tatlin.
Thank you. My question goes to Mr. Goday. You're not suggesting that you should be telling me which questions I can and can't answer?
Not at all, sir.
Okay. Yeah, and I feel like Ms. Lopez is an adult, and if she can't answer that question, she will defer to the superintendent. But the reality of it is, Mr. Goday, I'm going to ask the questions I need to ask to be responsible. And, and I, I take offense that you would tell me that I should ask this or shouldn't ask this. I've been on the board a while too, and it troubles me. And so in the future, I'm going to ask my questions and you ask your questions, but please don't tell me what questions I can or can't answer.
May I respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I never intended to do that in any way, shape, or form. What I was trying to say was asking Ms. Lopez for something that's outside of her job description is almost unfair for us as a board to do that.
And that's why he sits here. He sits here because if I ask her something unfair, I am comfortable with Ms. Lopez.
Then I very much apologize to you. I did not mean to have that impression given at all. I was actually trying to work with Ms. Lopez to not put her in a very awkward spot.
Mr. Goday, I don't want to put Ms. Lopez in a bad spot either. I think she's doing a great job, and I appreciate the work that she does. I appreciate the presentation. I want to stay on top of this. You're right, we have had budget deficits in the past. I've never seen money flow in like this from the federal government before, ever. No one has, not the state, we're printing money like it's going out of style. And we're going to run out. Right now, Congress and the federal government, which is in my arena, is not putting any more money out there, nor is there expectations that there is more money. So we're okay this year. We're going to be probably okay next year because we're going to have continued flow of money. But if there's no more dollars coming from the federal government, we're spending money on reoccurring expenses without reoccurring revenue, and it's going to be a problem moving forward, and I'm raising the flag.
Yes, sir. And I apologize if any of you or any other board member took any offense at what I was saying. I was really only trying to make sure Ms. Lopez was not put in a very uncomfortable position.
And I appreciate that clarification, Ms. Lopez. Please feel free, anytime if I ask you a question you can't answer, you know. You've worked with me, and you know I'm not going to put you in a bad spot.
Yes, sir.
I might put him in a bad spot, but I'm not going to put you in a bad spot.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Collins.
No problem. Board Member Bernard.
And if it wasn't clear, I was, my, 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 this is not directed at Ms. Lopez or anybody on the board because I think the board understood my questions very well, that I was asking for an accounting of what is normally in the general fund that has been shifted and is now being paid for out of those one-time monies. But I'm, I'm asking those questions for this board because we are responsible for this budget. And we know we are responsible for this budget. We're responsible for the school district and these children and all of these employees. So we are all asking for that. Ms. Collins just asked for it, I heard her ask for it, I'm not going to speak for her though. And I heard Mr. Tatman ask for it, and we are well within our responsibilities to ask for this information.
Board Member Dyson.
Well, I too have been asking for, you know, what are we doing as far as paying? Are we using S or dollars to pay for reoccurring expenses? And so that is a concern of mine as well because I, I too am thinking, you know, we're okay right now, and we're going to probably be okay because there's still going to be S or funding available next, in our next budget. But I too am concerned about that one that follows because I don't think there's going to be additional dollar cent either. And so I, I too have been asking and wanting a real thorough, give us what this looks like in a forecast situation. So, and, and, and this is something that you may need some external help with. But we do, we are responsible for looking at not just one budget at a time, but being thoughtful about, you know, projections and where we're positioning ourselves to be. I don't want to fall off of a cliff either. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other requests to speak. Superintendent, did you have anything else left from your update? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Jill, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, so now I'll go back to my questions that I had about the COVID statements that were made. So I've gotten a whole lot of public input and questions, and I just want to make sure that we, as a district, are making this very, very clear and we're not just saying it one time in a board meeting because I think people really need this front and center announced. So my question is, and I just wanted you to reiterate, that as of now, we have shortened the time that staff and students and anyone at school site or, you know, involved with that school would do, all of that quarantining is going down from 10 days, from 10 days down to five days, except for our pre-K students, and that is effective now. So that's my first question.
So yes, we've been following these set of guidelines. So if you are K to 12, because you're required to wear your mask, you would go into five days of isolation, and then five days would be it and you'd come back. For pre-K students, because they do not wear masks, it is 10 days.
Okay. So, because what is happening is that you'll have a staff member who is also a parent, and they, their child is in a situation where they were in contact or, you know, in a certain radius of someone that tested positive. So they get quarantined for 10 days. Now keep in mind, this is a staff member's child, in this particular example this is, and then, in this scenario, the child then gets to come back for two days, and someone else comes down with it that were somewhere in their radius. And so now the child's out for another 10 days, and at this point, the staff member who's responsible for instruction for all these other, this whole class of kids, is now having to take off again. And we don't have, they don't have enough days, and the other, all the other children in the class are, are, are suffering because they don't have their teacher. And so I guess this is happening in pre-K, but how long have we taken that back on the other grade levels? Like that, that should not be happening on, for the other grade levels. It would have been five, two, and five if it had happened in another grade. You understand what I'm getting at? So for K-12, in that scenario, they would have had to leave for five days quarantined, and then if they came back and two days later it happened again, and they would have to be gone for another five days. That's correct?
Let me allow, Ms. Cherie Duvic, can you please come up? She works with all of our health, just to make sure we.
And then while she's coming up, I wanted to ask, so have we updated this information about the 10 is now five? And that's got nothing to do with vaccinated versus not vaccinated? It's just about grade level, right?
There is a difference between vaccinated and unvaccinated. Unvaccinated individuals in the scenario you're talking about, where they're close contacts, they are potentially gonna have to quarantine again if they're in close contact when they return to school.
Four, five days?
For another five days.
But the, the unvaccinated don't go up to 10 days because they're unvaccinated versus five?
According to the Louisiana Department of Health, are not required to quarantine unless they're symptomatic.
Okay, so you're not getting an increased days because of being unvaccinated?
No.
As your personal choice?
No.
Okay, okay. And I appreciate that very much. And so it's only, the 10 is only affecting our precares because?
Because they, they're learning to wear a mask. So the Department of Health guided us in what we put out that pre-K students should really be quarantining for the 10 days, especially when you consider that they're doing nap time without a mask as well. So those factors play in because nap time's more than 15 minutes and they're close contact when they're in nap time, potentially.
So we, as an EBR school system, have, have gone with that, although it's not coming from like the CDC?
It's come from the Louisiana Department of Health. I actually just confirmed with her a few days ago.
All right, thank you very much. And so what I wanted to find out is have we updated our frequently, our FAQs, our frequently asked questions? Is this updated, the days down to five? Is that updated on our social media? Have we done an announcement? Can?
Yes, we, we have updated board member Dyson. We can.
Can I get a shout-out, shareable blurb about this so that I can share it as well? Just if y'all could send that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, I'll have the, the team follow up with you right away.
Okay. And are our schools updating their websites and their apps and notifying their communities? Because I, I think that, I think we've lost some children to homeschooling, and I think parents are needing this information.
Yes, we can follow up with them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Vice President, that is my report.
Okay. Board member Lanis.
I'm sorry. Apologies. I notice a lot of conversation about this particular topic, as it should be, because we're talking about COVID, and it has been so debilitating to not only our community, our city, our state, but also our country and the world. My request is this, whenever we are meeting with our health committee, is it possible to make these meetings virtual so our community can see them as a whole? That way it's not information being disseminated from the top and then it's going down to the bottom, and then we're losing communication somewhere because there's so much back and forth right now that it's even hard for me to follow at this point. So that's my request tonight. Anytime that we're meeting before or with the health, the health committee, can we please make those meetings virtual where the entire community has access to see what is going on inside of those meetings? Because again, at the end of the day, we, they're entrusting us to ensure that their children or our students are safe inside of those classrooms, not only them, but also our teacher support staff, bus drivers, janitors, and everyone in between. And that is vitally important because we're talking about the loss of life, life or possible loss of life. So that would be my request for tonight. I will be following up to ensure that we get some answers back on that. But I think that that is the most, the biggest priority that we have right now is ensuring that transparency is key when these communications take place. Thank you.
Board member Bernard.
I too had constituent questions in the last couple of days about quarantining and about students being asked if they are vaccinated, not in the presence of their parents, by staff members, and it's my understanding that those incidents have been addressed. I have had questions from parents regarding whether or not their children would be required to be vaccinated in order to attend school. I've had to explain to them state law regarding waivers, and I would like to make that information readily available to, to them via social media and any other, if we have a form or a letter that we are using, I would like to make that available to them because I don't want to see them leaving because they're not ready to make that decision yet. So, and I don't want anyone to feel pressured to do something they're not ready to do either by peer pressure or any other way. It's just, it's a private decision for families to make together, and I want to provide them with all the information and the resources so they don't have to make assumptions about these things. Thank you very much.
Board member Lanis.
I'm sorry, one last thing. I just thought about it when board member Bernard just spoke. Where are we right now with mask vaccinations for children inside of our schools? I see that the city is currently moving into those spaces, and I would love to hear that we are moving into those spaces, given that we have so many of those students inside of our, inside of our schools.
Sure, make sure I hear your question. You would like to know, board member Lanis, where we are in terms of vaccinating students in schools? Is that correct?
Correct. And if we're not there, are we on schedule to start doing mask vaccinations for our students?
Yes, Ms. Duvic.
So far this school year, we have all of our seven school-based health clinics that offer vaccinations to staff and students who want to seek that. We've also done vaccination clinics on the weekends in partnership with Arlayda Lake Hospital in each region.
What are the age groups? Because I know.
Five and above.
Okay, five and above, okay. Can I get information on that so that we can share that stuff out?
Yeah, I can share the health centers in schools, Arlayda Lake Parent Resource Guide that we send home with students who are potentially seeking vaccination or seeking testing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Seeing no other requests to speak from the board.
Madam Vice President, that is my report.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving forward with item D1, items for consideration. One stipend, consideration of a request for the approval of a one-time stipend of $2,000 for East Bay Rouge Parish School System Classroom Teachers and Librarians for the 2021-22 school year strategic, oh, can I get a motion? Okay, board member Lanis and board member Howard. Seeing no requests to speak from the board, any public comment?
Hi, my name's Anna Lacy. I'm a talented visual arts teacher at Brownfields Ryan and the Virtual Academy. With the current wording for the stipend, it says that it's for teachers who have rosters. And what that does is it eliminates your talented visual arts teachers in elementary, your talented theater teachers in elementary, and all of your talented music teachers because we don't technically have rosters. We have a list of students that we service, but we don't have rosters in J campus. So I really think that y'all should, you know, kind of reconsider the wording of that. Like this year would be the only year, I, I knew this is a one-time stipend, but like I qualify for it this year because I teach middle school and high school through the Virtual Academy, but normally I wouldn't qualify at all. And I just think that, you know, you need to include all of your talented teachers in this because they do a lot of work with their things as well. Like y'all just had the talented music students performing. And, you know, without the talented music teachers, they wouldn't really be able to do that as much. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, oh, yes, ma'am.
Hey, everybody. My name is Paige Caldwell. I teach at McKinley Middle Magnet. I have questions about the stipend because even though I'm never gonna complain about you guys giving us money, our support personnel are not included in this stipend this time. Now, the previous stipend that you gave us, you cut out all of the women who worked pregnant during COVID face-to-face. They put themselves and their babies at risk, and they got cut out of the stipend. And the judge, or the reasoning at that time was because if we allowed them to have it, then we would have to take it away from support personnel. So why are support personnel being excluded this time around? Our bus drivers and our cafeteria workers have been right alongside us, doing extra hard work, working far more manual labor than what we do. And I'm not saying that anybody's more important than the other, but we all work as a team, and I don't think it's okay that they're being excluded this time. Just like I didn't think it was okay that those women were excluded last time. On top of that, it's, this time around, it wasn't based, or the, the days that people have had to take off, right, are still included, but it seems to be a little bit more loose than it was last time. And that's great because that means it includes more people, but I think you guys should really look at these situations like Ms. Dyson was talking about, where you have teachers who have spent their five days, who are now into their sick days because their children are quarantined. It's not feasible for teachers right now. That was one of the concerns that LAE wanted to bring to the table, and we weren't listened to. So I'm just, I'm just here to say, as a teacher who deals with support people all day long, my cafeteria workers, my bus drivers, if y'all want to make them mad, go ahead. But it's not going to be okay to keep making your staff and your faculty upset. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Good evening, board. My name is Caleb Holmes, parent union organizer with Step Up Louisiana. And there's a theme that I'm noticing with the two previous speakers, and I'm gonna allude to that later on in the speech here. But first off, we are advising that the board vote no on the $2,000 stipend with a caveat. And that caveat is this, the first one is the fiscal health of our district. As prescribed by state law, we must retain at least seven and a half percent of the general fund budget and reserves. And based on this current proposal, this kind of fiscal irresponsibility is indicative of a greater problem. The problem is, the problem is personal perspective and gain over the overall health of our students, community, and our public board. This leads to a second concern, which the two previous women alluded to, and that is solidarity with each other. We can't survive without each other, and we can't throw each other up under the bus at any, at any moment. Without every member, without every member on a team working together, you have a recipe for failure. I would argue that the community, the students, the parents, and the workers don't want their systems to fail. So why would you set them up for failure with this kind of divisive stipend? In summary, let me be very clear. Like they alluded to, no one is going to deny that we need greater assistance. But in that assistance, as my grandma always said, it's not about what you do, it's how you do it. Step Up Louisiana and other groups are expressing two very clear points here. First, please protect the fiscal health and future of our board by ensuring that the funds are used properly. And let me, let me reiterate that we make decisions universally that benefit all members of our system. Providing relief for our hard-working school system staff should be paramount, but it should not come at the expense of divide and conquer ideologies. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tiani Shavers, and I attend a Sturmer Middle, I mean, I attend a Sturmer High School. And I would like to speak about the stipend. As a student of the EBR school system, I feel as if it is very important for our teachers to ob, to attract and attract teachers to high, to the schools. I feel as if, if the stipend is supported, it will affect the morale of the classroom and show teachers that they are valued and more appreciated in the classrooms. So I'm asking you to support the stipend for the teachers.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mimi McMurdo. I'm a speech-language pathologist at Shenandoah Elementary School and Woodlawn Middle School. And I want to first commend you all for the proposal of this stipend. As I see firsthand, the effect that COVID has taken on our, our teachers, our students, every staff member. Our teachers are very, you know, it's very difficult for everybody. And so when a teacher's absent, it affects everybody. It's not just affecting her one classroom. It affects her colleagues. It affects other students because classes are split and they're put in other classrooms because there's not enough substitute. and they're put in other classrooms because there's not enough substitute teachers to come in. So, I really commend you for this effort to try to, you know, retain teachers and to boost morale. I think that's really going to help. But I'm here today because as a speech-language pathologist, I serve 50-plus students a week, usually twice a week to sometimes three times a week. I'm a, I'm, you know, a certified, nationally certified licensed therapist and there are others like me. And we don't have a class roster, but we have a caseload. And I just would like for you to consider including us in this stipend because, you know, we make, I'm not only speaking for myself, but other SLPs, that we, we try to be at school every day and we know attendance is vitally important. And we just, we know it affects our students and our, work with our students is really important to their achievement in the classroom. And so, I'm just here tonight to ask you to consider us for the stipend. I think it would really help with morale in, in terms of our, our part in, in student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Riley Brown and I came here to say how I totally agree with the stipend and that the teachers deserve it. And I also think that y'all are doing a fantastic, a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Catherine Carmichael. I live in District 7. I'm all for this raise for our teachers. I really do think they deserve it. However, I like some of my colleagues that have come up to the microphone. I agree that our support staff deserves something as well. I did do a little research today on increases for the support staff. This summer, you approved a budget that had a step-up plan. And so, if you were a bus driver and you went from step one to, you were at step zero, you had $17.97. And if you moved to step one, that's $18.22. You move to step three, that's $18.72. And step four is $18.97. Would you like me to continue? Because it goes up by pennies. So, $2,000 is a lot for teachers and they do deserve it. But I talked to my bus driver this morning and he was pretty upset. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public, oh, yes ma'am.
May I speak again?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't recognize you had already spoken. I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Put my glasses back on. All right. So, seeing no other public comment. All righty. Board Member Bernard?
I love the idea that we're able to give something small that would be a potential morale booster to those, those employees who have a roster. However, I believe that there is nothing that is a greater morale killer than to say publicly, "We're giving you guys a bonus, but only you guys and everybody else doesn't get one because what you did was valuable to us and important to us, but what everybody else did was not." I'm going to leave out a category here. I know I am. But there's the speech and language pathologists, the English as a second language teachers, and, and some of them are, are considered instructional coaches. But they have, I think they have a roster, but it's not really called a roster and they're not going to be getting this, this fund. But they fill in at the school. They're at the school every day. They have students that they work with. Their, their work is very hard and just as important as what our classroom teachers perform as well. We have, oh, guidance counselors also, I think, would, would not be included in this. We have associate teachers at, at only one school that I'm aware of. I think it's Mayfair. They're teachers with a degree. They're certified teachers, but they're, they don't technically have a roster because they would share their roster with the main teacher in the classroom. So, Dr. Narcisse, which of these categories are we going to be able to include in this?
Board Member Bernard, I can have Ms. Hall, the Chief of HR, come up and Ms. Lopez to give you the details of the categories if you'd like.
I would like that. Let's, let's go ahead and spend a few minutes with that. Thank you. Any of the groups of principals as well, any of these folks that I just named are going to be included in this? Or are they going to be excluded? So, would you give me that? Thank you.
Yes, hi. Can you guys hear me? Yes. Good evening, everyone. So, just to be clear, that the intention for the stipend came from a good place. We recognized that our teachers are hardworking. When I came here in November, the non-certified support staff was something that was voted on in June and I wanted to make sure that I addressed that first and that was long overdue, right? And, you know, we had employees who had to wait forever to get that done. And as a food service employee for most of my life, I understand food service has always been left off, always been like, felt like the step chop. So, it was always important for me to make sure that I took care of that in December. So, we took care of that. This is a continuing effort to identify the gaps, the disparities, the, you know, the inequities along the way. We have to be fiscally responsible. This is why we're doing it this way. And, and I understand where everyone's coming from in terms of concern, but I promise you, this is coming from a good place. And we are looking at every situation that arrives. Like your associate teachers that you're referring to at Mayfair, they support a teacher with rosters. So, they are the ones who'll be receiving that. So, we are looking at all different scenarios.
Both teachers in that case would be?
Yes, that is correct.
And what about the ESL, English as a same, as a second language?
They're supporting teachers with the roster. Yes, they will.
Okay. What about guidance?
Guidance counselors, they don't have, and help me with this, Bianca, Ms. Leonard.
Guidance teachers, and I just want to put in a plug here for them, also for speech-language pathologists because guidance, I'm, let's say I'm a guidance teacher and, and I show up at the school and we have five teachers out today. I'm taking a class that day. I'm probably going to take classes all day long.
Understood.
Because I have to, because, because it's been a hard year again. And so, I worked as hard as everybody else did. And I did my job and that job because people were out.
Understood.
So, if I could just say something, Ms. Hall. Board Member Bernard, we don't disagree with you. However, here's where our challenge is. We have a compensation study that we have to do in the school system that is going to take months to do. In that compensation study, this is before I arrived, the salary scales, all the scales have been off, which has caused a lot of different sets of issues on salaries, placements, all those things. What we've decided that we were going to do was to be able to at least do the best we can to stipend and compensate until the compensation study was completed. But we do believe that instead of waiting all the way until that time, till the full compensation study is done, which will take months, which we've, which the board approved for who to do that study, we said, "Let us try to make sure that we give funding to those that we have not recognized and gave." The board approved, it was in June, if I believe correctly, the board approved for all non-certified staff. That payment did not go out until December.
Correct.
And, and there's been a lot of reasons behind that. From that time, we gave a stipend of $1,300 that first time the board approved, which we were still waiting for compensation study because we know we still have to increase salaries across the school system. And so, but we wanted to wait before we make a recommendation to the board around that. We put the, make sure the compensation study is completed. And so, this has been an effort on trying to pay those who we have not have, provide this opportunity, at least temporarily, until we get to the compensation study to complete in order for us to then recognize the entire school system of many hard-working employees to be, be able to improve. So, and also trying to do it in a way, as you should, to make sure that we are fiscally responsible. We know that it is not favorable to break it up into this, this particular way. But this is the only way that we figure that we can be able to do that, at least temporarily, until we can be able to make sure the compensation study is done. So, then we can make the full recommendation to the board to increase all salaries across.
Okay, good. So, earlier today, I think you two, you mentioned to me that the compensation study would be ready in, did you say, a couple of months? This is February, so maybe in May?
Ms. Hall, when you talked to the, the group, what did they, what was there, what did they say?
So, the group that started off with the, received the contract back in October, they actually end the contract because of COVID. They were impacted by COVID. And the district attorney, Mr. Shamlin, is aware of that contract situation. So, now we are looking at some, another firm to take care of that.
Oh.
Yes.
So, we don't have an ETA on that compensation study?
Mr. Shamlin, can you add to that?
Yes, I'll jump in real quick. We are discussing it, the option with at least one other firm. We hope to have a contract by the end of, potentially next week. They could begin work as soon as thereafter. So, the board's approved the contract with the firm. We just need to get someone secure.
Do you think that that, do you have an idea on when that would be delivered?
I'm not sure of the schedule for the actual development. I can tell you that they'll begin work as soon as the end of next week.
Okay, but do you think they could deliver it by the middle of May, say?
I'm not a compensation study expert, Ms. Bernard.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to make a substitute motion anyway here. So, I was going to say that we would postpone until the compensation study was provided and the general fund budget was provided in May. But I think the substitute motion should be that we would reconsider this when the compensation study is provided, either in May or in June. We'll know what the budget is. We'll know what we're looking at. And then we'll know how much we can give to, and to whom, and also probably approve the new salary schedules in the general fund budget because I think, I think we need the compensation study in order to do the budget this year. If we're changing the salary schedule, we need the compensation study.
Colleague, colleague Bernard?
Yes.
I don't, and correct me if I'm procedurally not proper, but I wanted to point out the funding, wanted to point out, point out the funding source as well as offer a substitute myself, but I don't want to cross you.
Okay.
Can we, can we revisit a substitute after I make my comments and maybe it'll-
Well, you're next.
I defer to you or vice versa.
Yeah, you're next. So, why don't you take it from here?
Okay.
Vice President Collins, and, and I'll probably second your, your motion.
Well, I mean, but, you know, don't say that just yet. Let me just-
Let me jump in for a second. There, there's no motion until there's a second, so.
Right. I was, I was wanting to offer one, but I'm going to wait for, I'm going to wait to hear what she has to say because I, I think I'll probably appreciate what she has to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board Member Bernard.
Wait, I'm sorry. One more thing. I very much appreciate where the sentiment from, that this is coming from and that we are, are trying to do the right thing for our employees. I, I do recognize that. I think it's been a bit confusing for everyone, though. And, and so, we, we really need to have the opportunity to clear that up before we make, take action on it. Thank you.
So, I have a bit of a question. We saying that this is coming from the general fund. I notice that it's proposed to come from the general fund. I notice that I don't see anything, a line item that may be attributable to this type of expense from the ESAR presentation we had earlier. I want to read, and so, perhaps the, perhaps it's collapsed into one of the existing labels as we discussed earlier. Not enough detail on some of these itemizations from the ESAR presentation. But, and, and if so, please point it out to me because according to our U.S. Secretary of Education, in an article dated on ABC News, so not CNN, not MSNBC, not Fox, a supposedly unbiased or moderately biased, but nowhere near MSNBC or Fox, okay?
Sort of in the middle.
All right. Education Secretary urges schools using federal funding to combat, combat teacher shortages. In a letter Thursday, Miguel Cardona urged schools not to waste the chance. The Department of Education on Thursday urged districts to combat pandemic-fueled teacher shortages by offering them more money from the pot of federal COVID relief aid. In a letter sent to schools nationwide, schools are facing dire staffing losses as droves of teachers leave their posts exhausted by the stresses of the pandemic. Education Secretary Miguel Cardona said federal money could be used to hire more substitute teachers and give permanent teachers much-needed time off or to offer teachers better salaries through hiring or retention bonuses. Let's be clear, and they quote the secretary. "Let us be clear. The American Rescue Plan provides vital resources to hire additional educators and school staff and to improve compensation to recruit and retain educators and school staff." Cardona wrote in the letter to educators obtained exclusively by ABC News. Okay, I lift that up because for several months I had been asking, I had been seeing this school district do that and this school district do that. And maybe they were doing it right, maybe they were doing it wrong. But now I see this article, okay? And now we in this position of trying to go ahead and do something for our teachers and, and librarians and hopefully our staff. But then we pulling from our general fund and, and we don't have information at this point that our general fund can afford the $8 million. So, have we exhausted the line item that what the U.S. Secretary of State would have advised, would, would advise us to pull? You know, he said for us to do this with this money. And so, what line item would that fall under? Has that been exhausted or what? Or if not, then how much is left in the pot that that would fall under?
Sorry, Board Member Collins, I just want to make sure I understand your question.
Okay.
Are you saying, are you trying to, is your question that you want to know how, how much money from the ESAR can be used to compensate teachers? Is that your question?
How much money do we have left in ESAR from what we've received that could be used to compensate our teachers and staff? Because according to the U.S. Secretary of Education, we are able to do that with this money. So, how much money do we have left in what's, you know?
Okay.
Dr. Bell?
So, I am aware of the letter and the guidance.
Okay.
But to answer your question-
Okay.
That is this money going to be used for the stipend, the answer is no.
Mm-hmm.
The, the letter is speaking of, like, we can allocate the funds to attract and retain teachers for learning loss. We cannot just pay for a stipend for everyone.
So, we can't, we can't-
With the ESAR dollars.
So, but to, so, we are trying, are we not trying to retain staff because we keep losing staff? So, are we not trying to retain staff? I'm not understanding why we choosing, and this is not a reflection on you, as a team, I'm not understanding why we choosing it to, to, to not label it what it is. We have used language during this agenda item to reflect the intention of retaining tired educators. So, I'm not understanding why we cannot use ESAR dollars to, as the U.S. Secretary of Education advised us to do across the nation, retain teachers and staff.
Vice President Collins, General Counsel, could you help clarify?
We probably need to work with some accurate language. So, I'm going to read what the guidelines initially released said. It basically said that we, we are able to use these funds for compensation stipends for employees when it's related to, and this is quote, "preventing, preparing for, and responding to COVID," right? And then there were several examples, examples given, one being addressing pandemic-related recruitment and retention, which I think is superintendent's intention partially with this, this stipend. Second, and the one that applies to us is when teachers have assumed duties because of the pandemic. So, we had a number of teachers having handled virtual instruction, additional duties that arise from virtual instruction. I believe that that's Dr. Narcisse. I believe that that's Dr. Narcisse's intent with this particular stipend.
Okay.
In terms of how he structured it.
Okay, and I mean, it seemed like the two intentions match based on what, the direct quote from him, not the paraphrase of what the U.S. Secretary of Education stated. And the conversation and the explanation given to us about why this is important, and I agree it's important, and I just also want to go on the record that I prefer not to take this divide and conquer approach of give to some and not to others when everybody, everybody has been stretched thin, which is a national problem as recognized again by the U.S. Secretary of Education. And so I don't, you know, I don't know, but this is what I was considering. Well, I actually, that's, and that's what my substitute motion would entail. So my substitute motion that I would like to offer is for the approval of a one-time stipend of 2,000 for certified educators, which then would include your literacy coaches and your et cetera, et cetera, and a 1,000 for support staff from the American Rescue Plan money, as advised to all schools by our very own United States Secretary of Education. If I could get, is it, is it improper for me as the chair to, of the meeting to make a motion and then get a second? So then I need two other people, right?
I'll make it.
Well, I just, for no confusion, hopefully I get a second. So I got Ms. Bernard, anybody who would like to do a second, and then that way we can also include support staff and not only teachers.
Ms. Collins, let's, let's let someone else make that motion with a second.
Oh, yes.
I'd be comfortable.
I, I also want to clarify one thing. Were you also changing the funding source from the general fund budget for both of these stipends?
Yes.
From which ESER fund?
Oh.
Any of them, all of them?
Whichever is appropriate.
Wherever we have money.
Well, we do not have the funds in ESER.
So it has been exhausted?
For, in, in ESER 2 and ESER 3, what I just shared with you, the funds have been expended and encumbered. So we do not have the funds to support your motion.
Help me, Jesus. Well, that would have been nice if we could have, what's the, God, you know, would have been nice if we could have got this on the agenda months ago like I have been requested. But, okay, so, geez, 8 million just for teachers and librarians, no support staff. Oh, just with my colleague, so we not talking just amongst ourselves. Well, so then I, I, we can't use the substitute motion, so I'll move on to Board Member Lanis, because it, it was never seconded. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President, for the second time. I think we need a lot more information on this particular item, so what I would do is, I would like to make a substitute motion that we move this item with our recommendation to the next meeting, so it gives us enough time to figure this out and find where we have the money to support this moving forward.
For clarity, the second, you mean the regular meeting of the board?
Yes, sir.
Of this month?
Yes. That's right. Yes.
Oh, we're not.
Correct. Okay, I'm the original.
So Ms. Lanis?
He was the original maker.
He was the original maker of the motion.
So, so you're amending?
I'm amending, yes. I apologize, yes.
Okay.
Do you need me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'd like to make an amendment, amendment to my original motion that we move this item with our recommendation to the regular board meeting in two weeks, so that we have enough time as a board to discuss it and find where we have the dollars readily available to support paying our support staff as well as our certified teachers.
And the second, Mr. Howard, you agree with that?
Okay.
Keep me in order. We on a substitute motion.
No.
Amendment.
No, he amended.
Yeah, no amendment. So then I could continue with.
Is it a first?
Go ahead, Ms. Dyson.
On the first?
Board Member Dyson.
On the first motion?
Okay, so you next in the queue, Ms. Board Member.
Thank you very much. I was thrilled when I saw that we were going to be able to be, that we felt we were in a position to offer stipends to our teachers. I know that this is so well-deserved and, but I also am very cognizant of the fact that we have a lot of certified employees who don't fall under the category of a class roster. And, you know, I, I've thought about the, you know, the certified deans, principals, coordinators, talented teachers, literacy and math coaches, ESL teachers, speech pathologists, guidance counselors, that do touch our students at school all day. And so I, when, and I like the opportunity, I don't want to hold this off for our teachers, but I do like the idea of giving us the few, two weeks here until our regular board meetings so that we can kind of get a little bit more information, and I'm hopeful that we can be shown some multiple scenarios of how funding could look if we included, and one of the ones that I request a scenario of seeing is all school site certificated employees. These are the employees that stay with our students all day, every day. And so one of the scenarios that I'm requesting prior to, so we can see it before we're at a meeting, because I think at this committee of the whole meeting is an inopportune time to start saying this dollar amount for this group and this dollar amount for that group, because we need a lot more information before we can see, is that even feasible? Is that viable solution or, you know? So I think we need this time, and I'm very hopeful we can get it, you know, enough ahead of our regular board meetings so that we can see what a few scenarios look like. And, and I'm specifically requesting all school site certificated employees, those that are at one school or another all day, every day. And so we have some that may be half-time at one school and half-time at another, but they see certain kids, just because they don't have a class roster, they do have what someone called a caseload. And so there's specific people, students on their load, and when you add it all up, it equates to a full day with students. And so that's my request, and I support this friendly amendment to this motion. Thank you very much. Thank you all of our staff, all of our, and, and I do know that I'm very anxiously awaiting the, and I did not know that we were without movement going on at the present time with our compensation study, and I am so sorry to hear of that setback there. And I hope that we've made it very clear to the person that's now going to the group that will now be taking that over, that we needed this yesterday, and, you know, we are really looking forward to gaining the results of that. So hope that's being emphasized, because it is good to get the whole picture before we, you know, but this stipend, I don't want to be waiting on stipend until a compensation study in May or June. That's not, that's not effective. So thank you very much.
Board Member Bernard.
I'd like to come back to something that Ms. Collins said a few minutes ago, that she, when she was talking about possibly a substitute motion, that she wanted to approve $2,000 for certified educators, certified, those who, with a certification. I think it's not just educators, because some people have certificate, other certifications. But also that she wanted to include $1,000 for support staff. Can we roll that into, Mr. Lanis and Mr. Howard, can we, can we roll that into the main motion? That we would have $1,000 for support staff? Because this is going without recommendation, so it's going to get a full vetting at the main board meeting, but I don't want to leave anyone out here. You know, paraeducators, they, they do have a certification, I think, is that right? Paras are certified? HR? No. Okay, so then we get $1,000. Okay, but we, because this, this allows us to not leave anybody out, the $1,000.
Well, this is what I said, I think that's the, that was the whole idea of creating the friendly amendment, so that we can exhaust every single plan possible to ensure that everybody has a fair chance to get paid during this particular item or whenever we do vote on it. So I, I think we just leave room for that to, to take place?
At the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm good with that. I just don't want to leave anybody out, and I, I want a fiscal note attached to this. I want to know what this is going to cost in all the scenarios, like Ms. Dyson said. Thanks, y'all. Bye.
Board Member Bernard.
Thank you. I just want to get, make sure I'm clear, Superintendent Narcisse, in your, your explanation about the intent, we, we've already approved the compensation study, and knowing that it's going to take, you know, three months roughly, or the danger is that, that some teachers may make, you know, other plans for the next school year. So, and looking at those classifications that we know that we're low on right now, this was an effort to bridge the gap until we could get the compensation study, knowing that we're, we're low in those areas, and that was the reason that this was brought up, so. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board Member. Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. You know, I, I appreciate the effort to give a stipend to, to our teachers, and I understand that we made some changes in the fall where there may have been some, some, some raises or another stipend that, that took place. You know, and you, you would think that, I know you, you had a, you had, you had a good intention. Your intentions were, were very good, but, you know, it looks like, you know, there's, there's always going to be somebody that's missing and, you know, feeling like they, they've been slighted out of this. Yeah, I understand that sometimes paras will be watching classrooms when our teachers are out, and I've even heard, in some cases, we've had, we've even had cafeteria workers come in and cover classroom. That's kind of hard to believe, but, you know, that's, that's what I've heard. So, you know, I appreciate an effort to, to try to cover more people in, in, in the, the changes that we're going to make before we go to the full board. I'm hoping that we can include some more people, but, but y'all just keep in mind that, you know, it seems like whatever, whatever we decide to do at the end of the day, not everybody's going to be happy. And, but, you know, as many as we can include in it, you know, we'd appreciate it, but, you know, just understand it's, it's not going to be perfect, and when we get the, the study done, then, you know, maybe we'll have some better news. But I certainly do appreciate the effort to, to give a stipend to, to the teachers, and hopefully we'll be able to broaden it a little bit, but, you know, not knowing exactly what that budget is, we may be back at square one. So thank you, Dr. Narcisse, for your effort. I know your heart was in the right place.
Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, this is, this it, because we went to the, all right, Madam Secretary, please call Bernard.
Please vote. The motion carries.
All right, moving forward with item D2, expansion of Mandarin program. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval to create a vertical pathway for the Mandarin program from Baton Rouge Flame to Westdale Middle for the 2022-23 school year. Moved by Board Member Bernard, and a second by Board Member Ware Jackson. Seeing no requests to speak, any public comment. Know the flame pairs in here deep, come on. Can somebody fix the mic for him? Lean it down, so we can want to make sure we hear.
感谢您的支持，谢谢。Good evening. My name is Mason Meyer, and I represent the Mandarin immersion program at Westdale Middle School. My elementary, my elementary years were spent at BR Flame and the Mandarin program, and I was excited to continue my immersion language at Westdale Middle. I stand before you this evening to ask for your support for the Mandarin expansion at Westdale Middle School. In this way, I can continue to develop my Mandarin language skills, which will prepare me to communicate globally. Being able to speak both English and Mandarin has opened up a wider world for me, given me a better understanding of both eastern and western cultures, and will continue to encourage me to appreciate the differences in life. Your consideration would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Arnold Brown, and I am currently a Spanish teacher at La Bella Elementary, but last year I taught at Flame, and I just have to say that it was absolutely amazing experience. I was absolutely blown away by the children that I was able to see speaking Mandarin Chinese. Now, not only do I speak Spanish, but I'm also a Mandarin speaker. So,大家好，我是布朗老师.
Look at that talent we got at EBR, and I'm glad to have you at the school in my district.
Thank you.
All right.
And so what I want to say is, prior to me teaching in EBR, I had an opportunity to actually live in China for two years. I actually taught English as the second language in a university, and it was absolutely an amazing experience, absolutely life-changing. In fact, I was the only African-American in the city where I lived for two years. So to be there and to have an opportunity to be able to be immersed in the culture and have an opportunity to make connections, it was absolutely life-changing, and I still have connections today with those people, and I can call them my friends, and not only my friends, but my family. So the point that I want to share with tonight is that I also support the expansion of the Mandarin program at Flame to Westdale, because with the opportunities I was able to get when I went to China.
Good evening. My name is Arnold Brown, and I am currently a Spanish teacher at La Bella Elementary. But last year, I taught at Flame. And I just have to say that it was absolutely amazing experience. I was absolutely blown away by the children that I was able to see speaking Mandarin Chinese. Now, not only do I speak Spanish, but I'm also a Mandarin speaker. So,大家好，我是布朗老师.
Look at that talent we got with EBR. And I'm glad to have you at the school in my district.
Thank you.
All right.
And so what I want to say is, prior to me teaching in EBR, I had an opportunity to actually live in China for two years. I actually taught English as the second language in a university. And it was absolutely an amazing experience, absolutely life-changing. In fact, I was the only African-American in the city where I lived for two years. So to be there and to have an opportunity to be able to be immersed in the culture and have an opportunity to make connections, it was absolutely life-changing. And I still have connections today with those people, and I can call them my friends, and not only my friends, but my family. So the point that I want to share with tonight is that I also support the expansion of the Mandarin program at Flame to Westdale. Because with the opportunities I was able to get when I went to China at 24 years old, just imagine what type of opportunities, because these kids can have at their ages now. So I ask you to support this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, Superintendent Narcisse, board members. My name is Tricia McBride. I'm the principal at Baton Rouge Flame. And I just want to say that I really wish you would consider supporting this motion because this Mandarin program has grown with us. We started it about six years ago, and it's added a whole new component to our school. We have a more global feel, and you can walk through the school, and you have Spanish and Mandarin and French on this wing and on the other wing. And the children are all together. And pre-pandemic, we did a lot of things in the, in the auditorium, and we're getting back to that, where the children are exposed to all the different types of languages and cultures. We have a Mandarin day, we have a Spanish day, we have a French day, where they are purposely exposed to different types of activities with the Mandarin teachers or the French teachers going throughout the classrooms. And I really want for them to be included in the middle school. When we started the program, there was a promise made to the parents who were interested and who enrolled in their, enrolled in our program, that it would eventually move into the middle school. And so I'd appreciate if y'all consider that for the vote. And if you ever want to have a really interesting experience, come on down one day and listen to some of the classes, kindergarten especially. Have a great one.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kristin Merchant. I'm the word language coordinator for the district. So I don't think I need to say anymore. Word language coordinator. I value tremendously learning a language. I'm speaking English, French, Spanish. I'm trying to learn Mandarin. This is a challenge. This is a challenge. And I tell you what, I'm so amazed. I've been a teacher at Flame for 14 years as a fourth grade French immersion teacher. And when I see what those little children are doing at Flame in Mandarin, it is blowing me away. And I'm trying, and I don't do very well, but I'm keep trying. So all those little seeds have been planted for five years at Flame. Please make sure that they keep growing and blooming by allowing to have a wonderful Mandarin program at a middle school level, at Westdale Middle School. In the global world that we are living in, speaking a language, one or two or three, enlarge the opportunity to travel, to be tolerant, to, to have an open mind, to better understand people. And in our world, word language, it's, we cannot do without it. So, s'il vous plaît, por favor. Thank you for listening. That's it. Merci.
Good afternoon, good evening to all of you. My name is, my name is Deana Neighbors, and I stand before you as the magnet coordinator at Westdale Middle School. And I'm sure that you sat in awe when Mason delivered his introduction. That was by design. He did a fantastic job. Every day at Westdale Middle School, you can witness this type of exchange between a student and a teacher. East Baton Rouge Parish has been instrumental in setting the groundwork to prepare our students globally. We must stand in a posture where we would continue this greatness. We have the opportunity. We should position ourselves so that every student in the charter schools, in the private schools, will want to come to our schools for such an education. One that would prepare them at the elementary level, the middle school, and on to the high school. We must have consideration this evening so that we have students to articulate up, matriculate up from Baton Rouge Flame to Westdale Middle School. I humbly request that you consider what we have asked of you tonight. And you have witnessed it firsthand. I invite you to come to Westdale. Stop by Baton Rouge Flame and, and see it for yourself. This is an awesome opportunity for you. I thank you for listening. I thank you for your time. And we want your consideration for the Mandarin expansion at Westdale Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Casey Meyer. I, I didn't plan on saying anything, but if my son can come up and say something, I can say something too. So my husband and I both attended EBR schools. I went to University Terrace. We both went to McKinley Middle and then proud graduates of McKinley Senior High. And one of the key reasons why we have chosen to remain in Baton Rouge is because of this amazing Mandarin program. A lot of our friends have moved away over the years, but we are committed to staying so both of our kids can get this amazing education here. And it is one of the leading, you know, for Louisiana is unique, and we're leading the state in Mandarin immersion. And so to be able to expand it into middle school would be just absolutely amazing. So, sorry. But like my, I'm just so amazed at what my children have been able to learn because even though I was born in China and I came here, I, I lost the language. I, you know, my children can read and speak it more than I can. So I'm really, really proud of this program and what it's been able to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I just wanted to thank you all for your time. My name's Joshua Matlock. I'm actually Mason Meyer's teacher, and I'm incredibly proud of him. Just wanted to say that. I won't take up too much of your time. I know you have had a long meeting, have terribly many things to take care of. But I just wanted to express my support and also to reiterate the point that studying another language, I've seen it with some of my students, Mason Myers in sixth grade. I have some seventh graders as well that have come from BR Flame. And I also teach ELA at Westdale Middle School. And I have one student that is in my ELA class, but is also in my Mandarin class. And I see her mind shift when she talks and writes in English. And I can see the influence that learning another language has had on her in her other schoolwork. So it's been, I just wanted to, to share that experience. It's, it's very, it's powerful to see how just learning to express yourself in another language and learning another culture. And we just got through Chinese New Year, which was just on, on February 1st. Learning about all these customs and learning, you know, so many different, having to come across different belief systems has really opened a lot of my students' minds that I see. And I just think it's an invaluable experience for our students. Plus, I think, you know, I think there's so much potential, not just in the current, the current time set to look at expanding into middle school, but even going on to high school. And thinking about, Dr. Narcisse, some of your visions about concurrent credit and trying to increase our high school students' capabilities into really pushing into college readiness. Sorry about my tone. Thank you so much for your consideration. I really appreciate you guys' time. I know you guys are working very, very hard.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can leave the debate.
Yes, I have to go. 大家晚上好。Good evening, everybody. I'm teaching in Flame, third grade. I just want to say, this is my actually second, second year. But I'm meeting all my good colleagues. We have six people, native speakers in Flame, and teaching from kindergarten to fifth grade. I can see all the little, little kids, when they just go to a classroom, they have nothing about Chinese. And when they go to the fifth grade, they understand a lot of things. They can, you know, communicate. I won't say they were like native, but still, like, I can see a lot of improvement. So, but our, our, like, sixth teacher, we're really, really consider. We can see a lot of our students, they really want to go, you know, study further for Chinese language. However, we don't have this kind of support because as we know, like, right, right now, Westdale, there only, I think, is one lesson, one Chinese lesson for, per week. That's not enough at all. Especially when in elementary school, there's like immersed to whole language, like continuing math and science, social studies, everything's in Chinese. And just imagine switch, you know, only one lesson for one week is not enough at all. And so we can see a lot of our good students, they really want to go to, you know, still, still continue, learn Chinese. However, they have to switch to another school. So we see, you know, so one of our students, one of our colleague, like, Chinese teachers, saying that last year is like, keep, continue Chinese. We don't want you to lose it because this is kind of language. You don't immerse environment in one lesson per week. Most of them are going to forgot, you know. So that's, that's really a pity because they're spending like six year there. They can speak already perfect. So really consider to expand immersion program for the Westdale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to picture all of you. How is the day of my son that is in second grade in Flame now? He recognized numbers. He tried to teach us to count. He, when he does math, he said the numbers in Chinese. I have to say, I stopped helping my son because I can't, okay? He speaks Spanish as well as English, so Mandarin will be certainly his third language. And I like to believe I'm here in Louisiana, and my son is going to be high-profile performance considering himself. I like to believe in that. And I'm thinking about the number of hours he has spent in this kindergarten first and second now year in trying to remember how to write Chinese, which is the order of the trace, which is the way to, the pronunciation goes, that might be lost when he goes to middle and high. So that will put, at least from my side, extra weight on my shoulders to try to find money to support and continue this investment of hours. So if, you know, I, that's a fact for many of us, the parents. I didn't even need to consider if I should come today here because he have expressly say he loves to be able to speak Mandarin. He feels so confident, and he feels so unique that he get boost. So if it's possible, I, as a mother and a parent, I would like to offer my help in anything is possible to make this thing happen. He's in second grade now, obviously not finishing at Flame, but he will be there. And I would like to do the best I can. Thank you.
All right.
Hola, bonsoir mes amis, eh, on yalla? Good evening. Now, that was three different languages where I brought you greetings. On behalf of all of the children, see your humble cookie, Yanni Quinkos. Swahili saying that we are marching in the light of God. All of our children should be afforded the opportunity to learn different languages. As we know, it is a requirement for children to actually take two years of a foreign language in order to graduate from high school. But ASL is a language that is often slept on, that our children could actually learn. I come because my child is a child that is nonverbal, that is a child with a disability, that seems to watch everything in multiple languages, Vietnamese, Mandarin, Spanish, French, and the list goes on and on. But one of the languages that he took to, which was his first language, was ASL. The second language he took to was French. English was not the first or the second. We live in Louisiana that is native to French. But we also have a large population of children with disabilities.
Sister Court?
I'm on the topic.
But on the Mandarin?
Yes, ma'am, I'm on the topic.
At Westdale, okay.
I'm on the topic. I'm reclaiming my 15 seconds. Very cool. I just want us to think about how we are trying to teach, to speak about every student every day, but we only want to allow a foreign, a, a language immersion program to expand right in this area that's not accessible to my child. It would take us 46 miles round trip to actually make it to Baton Rouge Flame, or WAM, as they call it, the other school. We have to do better. We supposed to be making it to where every child is supposed to have access. I know our superintendent previously was a principal or dean at a school that was a language immersion that had more than 15 languages being spoken fluently. Why hasn't that come here? We need to provide programming to the schools that are the furthest away from Baton Rouge Flame and WAM, such as Northeast Elementary and High, Woodlawn Elementary High. They are not getting access to these language immersion programs. Though what I ask is just like the board, I truly thank y'all for actually amending the previous one and putting that one to the next board meeting. But let's actually do something about having ASL in other languages accessible. Like I said, I gave you two dialects, Igbo and Swahili. Swahili is taught at LSU. Swahili is also taught at Southern. So I think that we need to look at making sure that our children have access to everything. Thank you so much.
Seeing no other public comment, back to the board. Board Member Bernard.
Thank you. I want to thank all the parents and students who came and spoke to us tonight. Your skills are really quite impressive, young man. I called some parents from Flame that I know because I wanted to find out more about this and what the opinions were. And I was told that other, other school districts in the state have attempted to do Mandarin immersion programs unsuccessfully, and that this is the most successful Mandarin immersion program in the state. I think what we've heard here is that it's extremely successful. It's really unfortunate that we haven't had the opportunity until now to expand it at the middle school level. Because I know we started it with some unsurety. We weren't, we weren't quite sure, uncertainty. We weren't quite sure that we were going to succeed with this additional track because we initially were doing Spanish and French, but it's been very successful. It's so successful that I have an email that the rest of the board has as well, but I'm just going to read a little part of it. And it's from Ms. Meyer, who spoke earlier. And, and I verified this with other parents, that the, the school, the, the Mandarin program is 50% African-American, 30% white, 15% Asian, and 5% Latino. And I thought that was a very interesting makeup and an interesting mix. I would have expected it to be maybe 50% Asian, but not 15% Asian. It just was very, it was very curious to me, and it was very interesting. And I very much appreciate the information and everybody coming forth. And I am going to support this, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Would like to thank the superintendent in his absence for bringing this back because when Mandarin was first introduced at Flame, it was to be on the same track as French and Spanish, you know, moving on to Westdale. And we got caught somewhere in a quagmire somehow, and Mandarin was sort of stunted. So I appreciate this coming back to the board and, and being able to move on to, to the middle school level as the other language immersion programs that we've implemented have moved on. And I also want to add that not only are we looking pretty darn good in the state doing this, but on a national level, you know, only, it's about 15% of doing this, but on a national level, uh, you know, only, um, it's about 15% of private schools offer Mandarin across the country. And, um, only about 11% of the, of charter schools offer Mandarin. So, um, we are really in the forefront, offering this language. And when you look at the, um, influence of, uh, China across the globe, um, I think it's, this is a really good move for us, and we made a good decision a long time ago to include Mandarin, although we were a bit apprehensive about it, uh, but we went on and did it. And, um, I would, I would appreciate us supporting this move to have it move along the same track as it was originally intended to when we brought on Mandarin a few years ago. So, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Narcisse.
Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item three, professional services contract. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the professional services Okay, let me finish reading, and after we get our motions, I'll give you. Okay, so recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the professional services contract between East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, in the amount of $54,750 to provide professional development for instructional leadership teams. Can I get a motion? Board member Bloom, and then a second, board member Goode. Oh, and, 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 well, and my colleague wanted to, oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right. So, let's see. Seeing no request to speak from the board in a public comment about the motion on the floor, the, the request for the approval of the professional services contract between EBR School System and National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, seeing no public comment, back to the board, seeing no request to speak from the board on this item, Madam Secretary, oh, board member Dyson.
I'm sorry. Um, I just wanted some clarity, please. Um, in the backup materials, um, they, um, there's a mention of the CIR schools receiving this through the federal programs redesign funding, and so is this a use of ESAR funds to make sure that all the rest of the schools be given this professional development opportunity? I just needed that clarity.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no other requests to speak, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
The motion carries.
Moving forward, item four, professionals, professional services contract. The recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the professional services contract between East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Power School, in the amount of $17,026.44 for the pre-K coordinated elementary lottery. Can I get a motion? Board member Lannis, and a second. Board member Tatman. Is that a new request, board member Dyson? Okay. Board member Dyson.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted some clarity, I think, from, uh, Ms. Webb. Is she here?
Yes.
Hey. Thank you. So this pre-K coordinated enrollment lottery, um, I just wanted to find out, is this lottery going to ensure in the programs that we, the, the classrooms that we added for this, the pre-K classes that we added for this school year, is that, um, is this lottery gonna cover that priority with living in the attendance lines?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure of that. I think it's so good for each and every sector of our community to have pre-K, that they can matriculate from into kindergarten at the same school. Thank you so much.
Board member Ware Jackson.
You may need to come back. I'm looking at the backup, and, um, you know, I don't quite understand the, the numbers there with the, the, under quantity, it looks like 3,500, and then, uh, unit applications, and then the extended price USD 15,590. Is that, is that correct, that 3,500, or, or is that, uh, because there's not a dollar sign there, but it, you know, it looks like a, like a, like a, um, like a, a dollar number instead of a quantity number. Could you clarify that?
It's supposed to be a quantity number. We can take up as a max of 3,500 applications in our system, because we're also collecting applications from Head Start, Early Start, and we just start their process, and then we move them over to their site, so they can continue their own application process.
Mm-hmm. So it's up to 3,500 applications?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. And, uh, so, so how do you determine that, um, extended price, the USD 15,890? I'm sorry, I'm just kind of stuck on the math.
Well, and so what, what has happened over the years? We, it's a subscription. We started off at 1,500, $15,000, and they go up every year on their price for us to house their electronic system for us. And what I can do for, um, Power Schools is have them to justify how they came up with that amount.
Yeah, because it looks like something's missing in the middle.
And I'll look at it again for you, and I can provide that information to you.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What, uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes, ma'am.
So we have waiting lists for our pre-K enrollment?
We do. Once we open our enrollment, we anticipate to have waiting lists at certain schools.
So this is new enrollment, that doesn't currently exist?
Yes. This will be our new enrollment period for the '22-'23 school year, not for the current sk-, school year.
So last school year, we had a waiting list?
Yes, ma'am, we had waitlist.
At certain sites? I think I do remember seeing something.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
How, you recall how many students, not per site, but guesstimate on the number of total children in the waiting list?
If you can give me till tomorrow, I can give you the accurate number. I don't have the definitive number right offhand.
All right. And, uh, has there been a... How have we been managing the waiting list in the past?
It's, um, the waitlists are also collected in the Power School system, so as soon as our classrooms fill up, they would go automatically into the wait system or waitlist.
So this is what a contin-, this is not like a brand-new type of?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a, um, our normal, um...
Annual subscription type of situation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So where was this, and you may not know this part, how was this funded the previous school years?
Previous school year, we have used coordination of funding sources. We'll use our PDG grant, our LA4 fund, and also, so we just kind of coordinating different funding sources.
So not necessarily general fund?
No, ma'am, not at all. No general funds.
Um, and the previous funding sources, you don't foresee them, um, having, I mean, we potentially may have access to previously used funding sources in the future?
Actually, we are planning to phase the Power School system out and kind of run this through our J campus, um, so that it kind of help us to have merged the both of the datum systems together.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no additional requests to speak from the, um, board. Madam Secretary, please call and vote.
The motion carries.
Moving forward with item five, land purchase, the recommended action is consideration of a request authorizing the board president in consultation with the general counsel and real estate consultant to negotiate a purchase agreement for a portion of attractive land as may be finally determined pending final site plan and final resolution with break of land as outlined in the current tax plan for the building of a school in South Baton Rouge. All right. And seconded by board member Dyson. Seeing no request to speak from the board, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no request to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
The motion carries.
Moving forward with the next item, litigation. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, general counsel of East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, in the matter of Chelsea Ballad, on behalf of her minor child, name redacted, surviving child of the deceased Kobe Hoyt versus Geraldine C. LeBlanc, East Baton Rouge Parish School System and Berkeley Insurance Company. Suit number 684-734, section 24, and the 19th JDC of East Baton Rouge Parish, and to provide for related matters. Can I get a? Board member Tat-, board president Tatman, and board member Ware Jackson. Seeing no request to speak from the board, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no request to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Ms. Lannis, you good? The motion carries.
All right. Moving forward with item E1, presentation on redistricting, we have, uh, general counsel, we have, uh, the consultant on the...
Mr. Hefner is online. He should be available to speak.
And I'm here.
So, Mr. Hefner, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, members of board, I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there tonight, but I had a previous engagement with another redistricting workshop in the northwest part of the state, where it was snowing when I came out. So, cold weather is on the way. That's nothing new for Tracy up there in Boston now. Uh, but, uh, since our last meeting, I've been giving some thought to ways that we could try to engage, uh, not only the board in the process, but also the public. And, uh, the, the software publishers that I use for my redistricting software, I've been using them since the late 1990s, came out with a very powerful program that allows people to actually do and can even design their own plans online, the Map2 online redistricting program. But also, for those that don't want to get into it that much, they also make a module called Plan Publisher, which allows me to upload the various plans that we're looking at and evaluating to website where people can pull up a plan, zoom in, pull up demographics, uh, get the details of it, run reports, uh, print the maps, those kinds of things. I thought it would be a really good avenue to, uh, put online for this project, with all the interest there is, uh, out there in the public. And so I contacted, uh, Gwen, and then we got stuck with Tracy Horgan with Caliper Corporation, who makes the map software. No one in the state is using this software currently, uh, not even the state is offering this level of access to redistricting plans. So I think this is really cutting at school system. And I think it's gonna be very beneficial as we move forward on this process to, uh, develop a plan that we all understand by the time we get to the end of the road, uh, why the plan looks the way it does, and have, uh, considered all the input that, that's been given, and incorporated all the input and suggestions that, uh, we can from a legal and demographic standpoint. So, I think it's a really good tool. Uh, Tracy's online, I think she's ready to go ahead and give y'all a brief demonstration. Uh, at this point, I'm currently working up the files, so I can connect to their server, so we can go live here as soon as possible, and give access to all this to the board and the public. So Tracy, if you don't mind, I will go ahead and hand it over to you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, board. Um, I'll, I'll keep this as brief as possible. I know you guys have had a long night already. Um, but my name is Tracy Horgan, and I am here to talk about a couple of options, um, that you guys have at your disposal as you get into redrawing your district boundaries. The first of these is a tool that allows for, or facilitates the public to assist in drawing boundaries that will define your districts. And this is all done through, this is a sample site, this isn't your area, so just kind of use your imagination a little bit as we look at this. Each user does create a login. Uh, this is a multilingual application, and so it can be, can take on the language of whatever you are most comfortable with. Um, one of these is Mandarin as well, so that kind of ties in nicely to your conversation from earlier. But once the user has created a login and accessed the system, they are able to work on any of the provided starting points for your district plans, and then work on bringing better balance, uh, to those districts within, um, your specifications. There is a built-in help panel that I just minimized, so that we can see this a little better, but this tool facilitates easily adjusting district boundaries in order to see real-time what those effects will be. So in this case, I'm looking at... So in this case, I'm looking at, um, editing this district by adding some street blocks. And as I add those street blocks, I am able to see real time effects on the data that will be added in as that district boundary changes. So this is a good way for you to be able to provide input to what those boundaries will look like. There are a variety of tools that accompany this as well. On the other end of the spectrum is the ability to look at everything that has been submitted to the district with regard to proposed plans. This is for a different locale. This is a different tool. And this tool facilitates viewing district, uh, districts that are proposed. Again, this is not East Baton Rouge, so it's another state, but it still represents the capabilities of this tool so that you can zoom into any area and be able to get information on the district as it's proposed, as well as a variety of reports that you can optionally include. If there are multiple propositions, which there certainly will be, then those can be selected from the dropdown and you can get information on that proposition as opposed to whatever the competing proposals are. So that's a pretty condensed discussion of these two tools, but, um, that's, that's what I have to show you this evening.
Board President Tatman.
Good evening. Thank you for that information, Mike and Tracy. Will you pre-populate that software with the initial plan that Mr. Hefner developed and sent to us? Will that be in there as one of the options to look at?
Yes, any plans that I present to the board will be uploaded to the portals, most plan publisher and MapToon online for redistricting. So as we go through that, public will have access in the near real time on those plans. My process is to present to the board first and then the following day I'll upload those, uh, those files as we end our, as those maps are at the end of our redistricting session.
Great. So another question is, would someone be able to take that plan that you put forward and actually base a plan off of that and develop a new one?
For the MapToon for redistricting online, they should be able to. Tracy, if that's not correct, uh, let me know. But my understanding is they'll be able to build a plan, modify a plan, and create their own, uh, that they can then share. And of course, as the administrator, I'll be taking a look at it first to make sure it meets all the legal criteria. I, I don't want to have any plans going out that don't, that are not going to meet Voting Rights Act and State Stat because that'll just confuse things. But I'll work with the authors to correct minor conditions.
Well, great, thank you. That, that was my questions. I just want to make a comment. This is an amazing tool and I'm excited that EBR is doing more than any other governmental entity in the state. Nothing against my friends and other governmental entities, but the fact that we have this kind of resource where people can be engaged is just amazing. And so thanks, Amy and Gwen and all of you who I didn't mention, and Mike and Stacy for the work you've done on this. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Right, welcome. I think y'all will be excited as we get it online, start using it.
Thank you, Board President. Uh, yeah, I think this is really great. Help me just understand the, the, the nature of the software logistically. So if I'm Jane Doe and I go on and I modify the preloaded plan that's on the website, and let's say I'm in the middle of cooking and I have a three-year-old toddler and so I get started and I play with it a little bit. But then toddler falls and bumps his head and then I need to put my, I'm going somewhere with it. And my, and I have to put my spaghetti on hold and on the back burner. Uh, once I save so that I don't lose my work, is it finished? Or, you know, like, uh, is it a sign in and one and done? Or can you go in and keep working on it? You know, get your toddler to bed, finish your spaghetti, you know, and, uh, and come back to it and modify it. And then once you feel like, oh, you know, I think I kind of got this and I don't see anything else I need to do to it, this is perfect. You know, Jane Doe parent feels like it's perfect and then they want to submit it. Is that how it works? Logistically, how does it work?
Please, I'm gonna let you answer that.
Sure. Many of us are Jane Does and we have real lives going on besides drawing lines on a map. So this tool is designed to accommodate that. So you can log into it with your credentials. You can draw some lines. You can have to go chase down that three-year-old and mend their, their boo-boos and then go back to this in your jammies on your iPad if you want to or, you know, on your computer when you have a chance later on. So it's completely up to you how frequently and to what extent you make changes. Those changes are completely held private until which time you decide to either share them within the ecosystem or submit them to the, um, to the board to be reviewed as a potential plan.
Okay, good, thank you. Then my last question is this, and it's really, I guess, more of a legal question. Procedural, legal, blah, blah, blah. I remember when we sat, when I sat with Hefner, well, not Hefner, excuse me. Uh, the previous consultant and every consultant is different. I'm not expecting every consultant to be the same, but I'm trying to make sure I understand, uh, what's permitted. When, when I sat with Danny Garrett, I sat as an individual board member and I kind of played around with the map. Uh, it by no means was a final draft that, you know, this is my first rodeo dealing with redistricting period, much less redistricting software. And so, uh, in my understanding and in the way that that process, the process was being managed by the consultant at, at that consultant at that time, my understanding, as it was explained to me, was that each board member had that same opportunity. And I also remember, uh, the 2000, what, 14, 12, 13, one of those? Thank you. The, the, the nine-member map that got approved by the board was called the Freeman map after Craig Freeman. And I don't know if it was just mere assumption on my part. And so that's why I'm trying to get some clarity. My understanding was that it was called that plan because just like a bill, you sponsor a bill or something like that, you sponsor a policy. And so he sponsored it as an individual and maybe some co-sign, you know, whatever. And so then when I'm getting at, my question is this, do, um, has that protocol is consistent? That each board member has the ability to say, hey, you know what? I thought it is. And so, you know, may or may not get nine votes, but hey, one thing wasn't considered. I thought about it in the middle of the night and bam, or something, you know, just... Okay, alright. I just wanted to get some clarity around like, uh, process procedure. You know, what I may or may not have, what I may have assumed and was only my assumption versus, you know, what was truly happening.
So to clarify, just to make sure I'm understanding and to make sure we're clear.
Okay.
Board members can propose plans and those plans are then adopted by the board via motions and seconds and votes. So this process that we're going through now is to develop those plans. And so each board member has the ability to do that, to bring it forth to the board.
Alright.
And so that's, to answer your question, yes. It, it was named after the board member who devised the plan.
Okay.
And some board members devise multiple plans. You know, there might have been a Tatman one, two, and three, or a Collins one, two, and three.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's it. Uh, Board Member Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Just a quick, uh, bit of information. There have been several community organizations that have reached out. They have worked on, uh, redistricting all across this state and outside of this state, one of which being the Legal Defense Fund and also the Power Coalition of Louisiana, who have done just tremendous work on, uh, around redistricting. And they've reached out again to help assist in this process. I think it's a great idea because, and that's not to infringe on our own attorney. I know that you are a phenomenal person. But it's always good to have multiple eyes in the legal world that can help us work through this particular situation. So I would just encourage our board, whenever we have these community meetings, that we allow them to be at the table so that they can help us walk through these processes to ensure that we don't have to worry about these maps coming back again and that we also exhaust every single plan possible to ensure that our community's voice is heard. Thank you.
Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. To sort of piggyback on, uh, what, um, Mr. Lanis was, was speaking of, uh, there, there have been several requests for all kinds of numbers of, of maps and, uh... But I, I would like to ask for, um, a nine-member plan, um, using our, our present maps the, the way we, the way we look now and working from there, but based on the 2020 demographics and, um, uh, moving eastwards and eastward instead of that north-south alignment that we see in, uh, in Plan Three and, um, increasing the, um... What do you, let's see, what do we call that? The, um, the percentage of, uh, of the, increasing the, the populations in, uh, some districts and decreasing some where we've got a little bit more here or there, especially those districts that are, um, what do they call it? Packed or stacked or however, you know, just overly populated. And, uh, there's also been some requests for an 11-member plan, um, based on 2020 demographics, kind of using our, our current plan. If, if you could, could do that, um, I don't know, when, when are, when is the board? Does the board meet again like next week? Is it for our particular? We have one Saturday for the public forum. And then we meet again next week, is it the 8th or so?
Yeah, the 10th. We meet on the 10th as a workshop, the board.
Mm-hmm, okay. And, um, and will the public forum be live and streamed and recorded? Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Alright, and, and just to be clear on what Ms. Collins was asking, uh, I think I want to ask it maybe a slightly different way. Do board members have the right to request certain, a certain makeup of maps to be worked on and, um, and then presented?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Oh, because I want to just clarify that, because as you mentioned in the, with the previous, um, consultant, we were doing those things, but previously in 2014, you know, we worked as, we worked in groups sometimes. You know, sometimes maybe one board member met or suggested something. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that we're not out of, out of order, so to speak, in, uh, in requesting that. So, thank you very much.
Just to clarify, though, our process is, involves the entire board. I have no problem encouraging ideas, suggestions, requests, or plans. It's just that when that is done, I release that to the full board because I want to keep the full board on the same page. Because once you move a district, it's going to affect one or more other districts. And by sharing this information with the entire board, everybody can see it, can study it, can understand it, and they can weigh in on it. I don't like doing, and I won't be doing, private plans that are just going to one or a select group of board members. I, I encourage the suggestions and I think they're very helpful as how my workshops work. But the information is shared with the full board. And then once I share it with the full board, if it's a, if it's a plan that has merit, a legal plan, and I'm going to share that to the two portals that we're putting online so the public can also play in.
Yeah, that's the intention, to at least get it started and see where it's going to go and then, um, and then share it with the board.
Alright. Now regards to the 11-member plan, I certainly, and I've mentioned this several times, I do not mind drawing up an ambitious 11-member plan based on 2020. But I don't want to do that without the board being agreeable to that. I don't want to come in and blow inside the board. I know it's a very touchy and controversial subject and I want to be able to handle it the right way above board where everybody understands. So if the board will give, perhaps the board president some direction that they can pass along to me, I will certainly work accordingly. I am expecting some in the public to be presenting some alternate membership plans, probably starting this Saturday. And as those are reviewed and if they're legal plans, I'll be sharing those on the portals as well. I think it's important that we get all the input, all the information so that at the end of this process, the board has all the information it needs to make a decision.
Fair enough. Okay, Board Member Dyson.
Yes, uh, thank you. I, um, so I, I heard that in this presentation that we were going to, um, have these livestreamed. And I'm just requesting, can we be sent the, um, the livestream links so that we can each time, uh, share those?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I just would like to point out that, uh, what the consultant has chosen to express feels like it is more restrictive. See, feels like I would benefit more from being Jane Doe and going online myself and playing with it until I figured out I got something and then submitting it without use of the consultant. I'm just saying, it sounds more restrictive on the board members than it does on Ms. Jane Doe, who I'm glad Ms. Jane Doe does not have the same restrictions. But I just had to print that out. Alright, Board Member President.
So I actually know Ms. Jane Doe. She lives next door to me.
Oh, get out!
Just kidding. It is my opinion that board members ought to be able to request any maps they want. I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to do, you know, I don't think we want to get crazy because we have a consultant that has a fixed amount of time and energy. But I think, um, you know, somebody wants an 11-member plan, they ought to be able to ask Mr. Hefner to put it together. If they want a 15-member plan, they ought to ask him. I'm just saying, uh, you know, within the scope of the law, I think we all ought to put up whatever it is we feel like is the right or at least an option that we want to offer, uh, to the public and to ourselves. And, you know, the only restriction I would say is, is let's be sensible about it in terms of not doing 11 maps, like each person doing 11 maps. Just pick, pick some things, see kind of where you want to go. I think there's, you know, just from our conversations with you, with you all individually and then just hearing other comments, I think we're going to probably coalesce around maybe a couple of different options and then we're going to have to vote on them. And so I want a very open process and, um, and, you know, I do like the, let me just say this. Any map that I develop, or when I say I develop, or if I ask Mr. Hefner for a, a map, the moment he clicks the button to develop it, I want the rest of the board to see it. There are no secrets here. This is, and should be an open and very transparent process. And so that's, um, you know, since Mr. Hefner referred to the president in direction, that would be the direction I give. I mean, everything we've done so far with the way we've set up these meetings, the way we've diversified the meetings by having public forums in addition to workshops, the way that we're bringing in software, the way that we're constantly updating what's going on, the way that we can bring other people into this process is going to be what's best for our community and that's what I'm about. And so I just wanted to make that comment so Mr. Hefner could hear it and so that my colleagues could hear it. I would also say I have no more control or less control than you all, my fellow board members have, and I don't want any. This is our process and in the end it'll be our and the community's plan. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Can I just get a clarity? Can I just get clarity on your example? So like you sit with, assuming you would sit with, if you chose to sit with Consultant Hefner, and you were working on something, and then you wouldn't expect Mr. Hefner to say, "Here, board," until you were finished and reviewed it and thought it through?
Well, I don't know what his process is necessarily, but if I do, which I may not, I don't know there was a Tatman one, two, or three. I don't think I put a plan up last time. I think I saw Craig's first, and there were some conversations, and that may have been how it got to three, you know? And so that was the one everybody ended up being around. But, you know, if I asked Mr. Hefner to draw a 15-member plan, when he draws that plan, I would expect that he would share it broadly. And then if...
Once you reviewed, and I don't mean to interrupt, I just want to be clear about the intent.
I think once I reviewed it, I might ask him, you know, to make, maybe make some changes or adjustments. But I doubt I would, you know? I mean, I'm probably going to depend on him, and there are certain things that we want to make sure that we don't do. We don't want to dilute voter strength. We want to make sure that it's a good plan. And so that's kind of my understanding of how Mr. Hefner works. It is different than the way Mr. Garrett worked. So from that perspective, I'm going into this process with, just like you all are. I've not worked with a consultant who's handled it that way. But that's kind of my sense of it, yeah. I don't want to have a plan that somebody goes around and says, "Miss, you know, Vice President Collins, you know, Tatman's got a plan that says this, this, and this. I want you to see it because if you see it and you don't like it, call me and tell me about it." And, you know, and I say I have a plan or there's a construct. I just think we'll do better, and you can call me and say, "I don't like your plan." I'll say, "I might not like it either. I just asked for it," you know? So that's kind of how I see it. I don't know, Mr. Hefner, am I way off base on that?
No, I think you're actually right on target. And I think once we really get the process underway, all of this is going to fall in place. You'll have a much better understanding. I will admit, I do mine differently than the other demographers, but I have found this works out the best to facilitate a plan at the end of the process that everybody understands and everybody's worked together. And yet, we may have a couple of two and three plans at the end, but at least everybody will understand what underlies those plans. So in regards to the 11-member plan, given the comments tonight, I will go ahead and start working on, or I can't start it on one. I'll go ahead and finish up the 11-member plan, and I'll get that over to the board, and hopefully we'll be able to have some discussion on that next Thursday.
Okay, I hope, did that answer kind of your question?
Yes, it did.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Board Member Benoit.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Thank you, Mr. Hefner, for being here tonight. I have, I'm kind of confused, board. How, what is in Mr. Hefner's contract? How many plans are we asking Mr. Hefner to draw? Because I'm seeing that Mr. Hefner is providing us with the means to draw our own maps. And probably all of you guys are more technologically savvy than I am, so you can draw dozens of maps without asking Mr. Hefner to draw all the maps. That, I mean, I'm sure I can put together a plan, you know, a map or something, a plan of some kind. But how many plans are we asking Mr. Hefner to engage in developing and providing to us? Because he just gave us access to do this ourselves, and the public can do it. Is that correct? Did I understand it correctly? So we can log, create a login and develop any plans we want, and then we can say, "Okay, well, this one's looking pretty good. Let's put it out there, let's float it out and share it." Okay, the other thing that I need in order to start working on the plans, you know, that I might work on with the software, playing around with it like Ms. Collins is going to do between toddler situations.
Spaghetti.
And spaghetti, is I need Mr. Hefner's presentation that he gave us because there were principles of redistricting. And I'm trying to remember, I watched it virtually. I couldn't come to the meeting, but I watched it virtually. And there were things like keeping communities of interest together, maintaining incumbency was one of the principles. And then I think that pertains to keeping the districts, each of the districts somewhat similar or not. Like, you don't want to change too many of the precincts in any one district because then it becomes substantially different than it was previously. I don't know. But anyway, Mr. Hefner's presentation was very good, but I'd like to have like a list of those principles just kind of on the side while I'm looking at the maps so that I don't mess up too much.
Ms. Benoit, we can resend those to the board and also upload them to the webpage.
That's what I want.
As PDF, so.
Okay, and then can you just cut out just the most important part? Those, that list of principles, just boom, just that one little graphic there.
Yes, ma'am.
And so then back to my question. In Mr. Hefner's contract, how many, are we going to ask him to draw 100 plans? Or 12 plans or nine plans? Or are we just going to go with an unlimited amount of plans? What are, are we just going to run him to death here?
I'm not.
I doubt, and as a matter of fact, and we're just taking this as a quick discussion. When he was mentioning that people could submit, and then he would play with it and fix it or something, I was like, no, maybe just mark it doesn't fit the legal requirements and say, you know, still leave it public so nobody will be like, oh, they just trashed my plan. But put it in the link of, okay, these don't fit X, Y, Z legal requirements, and this is why not. I wouldn't personally recommend to our consultant that he puts time into fixing anybody's...
And I'm not, I'm not trying to pick on anybody who's asking Mr. Hefner to develop a plan. I may be the one asking myself because I may, I may be the least technologically savvy. But hey, maybe I'll come up with five plans and two or three of them are good. But I'm not picking on anyone. I'm just asking how many, what is the extent of the contract? Because I really don't want to burn him out. He's kind of busy, and I want to...
The contract doesn't limit us in the number of plans he can develop. My suggestion is he will operate the way other demographers do. He'll be at the services of the board to help develop plans. What we've done is we've come up with a tool that allows people to go one step further, work without the demography if they want, and develop their own plan. So he will still operate the way he would have done so had that tool not been in place.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That's my only question, I appreciate it, thanks.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. I normally don't, if I may, I normally don't put any limit on plans because I think you need to have the option to explore any number of plans in order to make a decision. And I don't want you to not do that because it might cost you more. So I purposely don't put a limit on plans. But I'll facilitate the process, I'll try to keep it manageable.
Oh, and Ms., Board Member Benoit has another question.
I apologize. So for those of us who are new to the software that Mr. Hefner is providing, is there tech support? And who is the tech support or what is the, how do we access tech support? Gwen, Mr. Shamblin, you can't be the...
Is that the Tracy question there?
I mean, it's, you know, everybody knows how to use certain products, but this is going to be new to us, and so is there tech support or not?
Mr. Hefner, is there like a tutorial that MapTitude provides to people? I know sometimes software folks have some video, like when I first started with Zoom, and I was like, what? And it's various videos. Does MapTitude have that kind of thing? Or do they just assume that there'll be some specific professional development that comes with such a specific contract of service, of product, excuse me?
Yes, no, that's a good question. No, actually, MapTitude has a very good online help and tutorials. I've trained a lot of people on MapTitude, and we'll use those tutorials to augment whatever training I may be doing. But they are very, very good. They not only have the written help on it, they also have videos that walk straight through it. It's very, very good, it's very, very effective. And I really think that if people avail themselves of that, if they get in a jam, they'll be able to figure it out pretty quick.
All righty, is that all, Board Member Benoit?
That's it, thanks.
Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you. I may have missed this in the presentation, but does MapTitude include precincts?
It will. Be uploading the GBR parish precincts to the website. It'll have all of that geography on that website. Those are the files that I'm preparing. I've got, I put them in a special directory on my system that is then linked to the servers that have to operate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other requests to speak. And no public comment on the presentation, only on action items where we get, where we're making a decision.
Ms. Collins, we do have two staff people that have been waiting patiently.
That's right, you did tell me that. And then I do see my colleague, Board Go...
I was going to do after this.
Okay, all right. So can we get the presentation finalized?
Yeah. So I want to, I do want to thank Ms. Stubbs and Ms. Jones, they've kind of jumped in and worked under pressure last minute, in some cases responded to requests. But they've done a great job of handling communications, some requests around communications and IT. So I'm going to let them come up and just give us a brief, you know, couple minutes on each so you guys get an idea of what we're doing in terms of promotions as well as the technology support.
So, good evening, Board President Tatman, Madam Vice President Collins, and members of the board. I'm Alex Dairo Stubbs, I'm the Chief of Communications and Public Relations. I just want to share a little bit about how we've been supporting some of the promotion of the opportunities for public input over the last week. We created a communications toolkit, some social media graphics for you all to utilize as well as the public. Those are available on our social media channels, flyers as well to share with your communities. We have also begun boosted posts on social media and begun PSAs through, I believe, iHeartRadio Guarantee and Cumulus. We've also secured some interviews through the major television, two of the major television stations, NPR News, and then we're working closely with our other media partners to garner some interest. So trying to get the word out as much as possible. Feel free to share as much as you would as well, and, you know, happy to support in any way we can.
And good evening again. On the website, we have a redistrict page. It is linked from the homepage on the banner. It's also on the About page under the Board Member section. There's a button that is next to the district map as well as the schools by board member. And you can reach that, I believe we're, we can show it on the big screen. But we also have put up the timeline for all of your events.
That's good.
There we go. And then the verbiage that Mr. Shamblin shared with us on what is redistricting for the public's understanding. And then as we get to the bottom of the legalese, we have incorporated also on here links for submitting comments that are built around the same structure that we have for board member comments about the board docs items. So you have the ability to not only comment, but you also have the ability to view all the comments that everyone submits. Until we get the links from Mr. Hefner with the software that's prepared, we have links to submit files now as well as to view those files if the public so chooses. So those are on our website with many different ways to get to it.
And I'll add one more thing. For the people who have no technology support, they can come to the office. We have information where they can drop off in-person documents, files, maps. We've identified Ms. Armon and Ms. Head, my assistant, as the two people who'll be the point people to receive that. And that information will be scanned, shared with the board, and also sent to Mr. Hefner.
Oh, you the technician. And I know you're going to provide support or whatever, but it would probably be helpful to put the links where people, you know, next to where they can say, "Oh, I want to do MapTitude," the tutorial links.
Absolutely. We can provide all of the links that Mr. Hefner gives us for the how-to, the help. And even if it rises to the occasion, we can have our ed tech team provide some assistance too on local tutorials.
Just for clarity, the MapTitude tool is being developed now? They've been working on it about a week. They've been pushing to get it done and ready for us because it's specific to our district. And so that's in process. So that's not up yet, but it will be within the next week, we can expect. And I'll let the board know so we can make sure it's communicated out through social media and the various platforms.
Okay. And then did any of the people in wait need AMI? Or do we want to wait until, until...
I just wanted to encourage my fellow board members to use those graphics in your social media feeds and anything that you communicate with constituents, because I have, as soon as I received, I don't remember, I think you maybe sent them. I've been pushing that on social media, and I've been getting responses almost immediately. I've noticed a lot of organizations shared what I posted almost immediately. And so I just think we also can, you know, we also have our constituents these that we can get the word out there. So I would encourage my fellow board members to do that as well.
And to piggyback on that, President Tatman, it is also on the homepage of our website, all of the social media. So you have Twitter and Facebook and Instagram, all of those are there as well.
That's awesome.
Oh, Board Member Golday.
I have a different subject.
Oh, okay, Board Member Dyson, different subject? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so I'm already getting feedback that we're going to have this available before public forums in certain areas, but not before the one for this Saturday. So I'm already getting this, and that's valid. And so is there, I guess, no way possible to...
Well, it's not within our, the development of the MapTitude system is sort of independent of the staff and myself, right? So we've been pushing to get it done. And so we have the vendor working around the clock to really finish that. And I want to remind you, we still have online interfaces allowing people to upload, because I know some people have already designed maps, already have information out there. So they can get that to us tonight. I mean, that's up, that's available, the links are ready, they're active, and people will be able to see what is uploaded in a shared folder. So that access is already in place. And so the MapTitude will be an additional tool we're adding to the array, if that makes sense.
And the other thing is, and I just want to get clarity. So I've already posted something that was sent to me, and I'm just trying to find out, was there some corrected version? And did I post an incorrect version?
Of the timeline?
I don't know.
I'm not quite sure what you...
There was some correction or something?
So, yes, we had one correction, and I believe Ms. April sent around the corrected version.
So you think I shared, when I requested a version, when I requested it, did I get the corrected version or the incorrect version?
So the most recent version in your inbox should be the corrected version.
I just need clarification of...
So I sent the first one, and then there was an email that said there was a corrected. So I sent the corrected versions back out yesterday.
So what was the difference in the two? I'm going to have to go back and try to see. My post has already been shared.
It was a...
And I don't know how to re-track all this.
Ms. Dyson, I'm happy to help and double-check and see which one you have posted and happy to help you offline on that.
So what were the changes?
So there was just one minor grammatical change.
Oh.
It's just a minor grammatical change.
So there wasn't a date change or anything like that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
It was a minor grammatical change.
Yeah, just get me the new one, and that'll be the one I share going forward.
Should be in your inbox, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Happy to help.
All right, Board Member Ware Jackson.
I just wanted to express that, you know, I'll be totally frank with you. I have no intention of going and working up maps on this software. You know, I don't have, I don't have time for this. You know, we got, we have an expert in place, you know? I can tell you what I'm looking for, you know? And, you know, I want to see the board and maps be reflective of the demographics of the parish. And I'm very sensitive to where, to make sure that certain schools are in the same family of schools and ensure that communities are together, you know, without, you know, stretching one district way up north, all the way down to the south where you've got, you know, that kind of stuff, you know, just doesn't quite look right, doesn't feel right to communities. You know, that's my main things. And, you know, I want to make sure that we're mirroring what the demographics say. And that's the main thing, so that, you know, so that everything is fair. And that's basically the bottom line. So, you know, I'll express to the demographer what is, what's really important, you know, to see, you know, if we can develop maps that way. But I have no intention of going and... But I have no intention of going and developing maps myself, you know. Thank you very much.
All right. Board Member, oh, so that is it on redistricting? And the last thing is announcement of meetings, but, but you requesting a...
Yes.
Point of, you know what I want to say, Board Member Golday, go right ahead.
Personal privilege.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, being that this is on Tuesday of next week, I just wanted to, there's no audience left, just about, but there are some on TV. The LawStem Commission is having the LawStem 2022 Annual Summit, which is a statewide summit. It will be held at the Raising Canes River Center on February 8th. And if you go to the Board of Regents webpage, or go Google LawStem, and you can get the registration for that. It is open to the public and open to particularly teachers and business people and so on. So I just wanted to pass that on as a member of the LawStem Commission. I know we don't have, I don't know, at the regular meetings, we have a place to do that, but this happens before the regular meetings. I just wanted to get it out there to the few people who might still be listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you. All right, I got a long li, oh, Board Member Dyson?
Yes, and I appreciate that shout-out, Mr. Golday, as well. And I'm just going to, one question, I had requested that this be sent to LSBA so that we could come up with a system for us to receive professional development hours for that session on Tuesday. I think it's a lengthy, all-day thing that I feel like should qualify us, so I just wanted to shout-out to the board members and, and all that. This should be, this should be getting approved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other requests to speak, I shall now read this long, important list of meetings upcoming. So I'm not going to read them in order as listed on the page, because I think it'll be easier for me to just go through and all redistricting-related, read those, then all pathways to bright futures, et cetera, okay? So, redistricting public forum to be held on February 5th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. at Woodlawn High School. All right, some are all board members may attend, the, the public forums. The next redistricting meeting will be that of the board workshop. That'll be held on February 10th at 5:00 p.m. at the Professional Development Center, which is the one on Sherwood Forest Boulevard. Then we will have another redistricting public forum to be held on February 19th at 9:00 a.m. at Park Elementary. Again, some are all board members may attend. Then the next redistricting meeting will be a board workshop to be held on February 22nd at 5:00 p.m. A redistricting public forum to be held on February 26th at 9:00 a.m. at the Instructional Resource Center. Again, some are all board members may attend, and those are all of the board workshops for redistricting, okay? Which is not public input, is us going with, going and consult, and discussing with the consultant, and then the public forums for redistricting, where you can input your, you can do online, submit a plan, or you can come and have a discussion in person and submit in person, that, those are the nature of the public forums, okay? Now, Pathways to Bright Futures Community Meeting to be held. So I, you know, this, to me, this justifies giving all the staff to have to come and support all of these meetings that I'm going through. Okay, I'm going to not play. I know y'all ready to go home. Okay. Pathways to Bright Futures Community Meetings, which is our dual enrollment planning, to be held on February 8th at 6:00 p.m. at Northeast High School. Some are all board members may attend. Pathways to Bright Futures Community Meeting to be held on February 15th at 6:00 p.m. at Broadmore High. Pathways to Bright Futures Community Meeting to be held on February 22nd, 6:00 p.m. at Astruma. Pathways to Bright Futures Community Member, Community, Community Meeting to be held on February 23rd at 6:00 at McKinley High. Pathways to Bright Futures Community Meeting to be held on March 9th at 6:00 p.m. at Scollenville High. Pathways to Bright Futures Community Meeting to be held on March 10th at 6:00 p.m. at Woodlawn High. Pathways to Bright Futures Community Meeting to be held on March 14th at 6:00 p.m. And again, for all of the public meetings with Pathways to Bright Futures, some are all board members may attend. And can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved, we are adjourned.
Ms. Dyson?